...in order. Lonnie, would you deliver the indication, please?
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together and conduct the business of the city of Jasper. Lord, we just ask you to watch over Mayor, Council, and look over our state and national leaders. Lord, we just ask you for the guidance for the betterment of all of us. Amen.
John, the end. I'll let you do it.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're adopted agenda. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening, those that are doing business and those that come to enjoy the show. So, welcome. With that, the agenda, council has a copy, would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, I called and requested an addition to the agenda. Thought I followed the protocol that I was expected to do concerning the job description for the city manager. I was told that the agenda was too crowded, so in that interest, I would like to separate out some of the personnel things, including the job description. There are other personnel issues that I don't think we should be discussing in open session, so I'd request a special meeting. And also, I would like to strike from the agenda, the Chamber Hotel Motel tax audit. I don't understand why we're talking about an audit before it's completed.
I will explain if we get to that point, then I will put you or I'll have Mr. Looney put you on the calendar for our workshop, for all the other discussions that you referred to, and thank you for your request. Any other discussions on the agenda? Being on, I'll favor with your hand. Three, four, all opposed, one opposed. Minutes of the February 5th, 2018 regular meeting, Lisa.
Monday, February 5th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 P.M. He requests that whoever makes table give an indication. Bill Pickett led into the size of the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Jim Ling seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Boyle read the minutes of January 8th, 2018, regular meeting. Councilmember Sunny Proctor stated that a correction should be made under item C, new business that Virginia Council is not replacing. Councilmember Jim Ling made a motion to adopt the minutes with the correction. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized that Councilmember Jim Ling should turn in his resignation as councilmember. Mr. Looney stated that all councils should have a copy of his resignation letters. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Looney to read his resignation letter aloud. Mr. Looney first read an email that had been sent to the mayor. Mr. Looney then read his resignation letter aloud. The resignation letter is to be made at the heart of these minutes. Item B, under old business, Mayor Weaver opened the floor for nominations for city manager for 2018. Councilmember Sunny Proctor nominated. Councilmember Jim Ling served in that capacity, and Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the nomination. Mayor Weaver asked for discussion. Gary Copeland asked to speak to council. Mayor Weaver gave Gary Copeland permission to speak. Mr. Copeland asked councilmembers why the nomination of city manager position at last month's meeting was not discussed in public. Mr. Copeland then stated that the decision seemed planned ahead of the meeting last month. He stated that it appeared every councilmember knew ahead of time, with the exception of Councilmember Tony Fountain. He also asked why did the council think that serving as mayor or city manager was illegal? Councilmembers admitted to no wrongdoing in their decision to separate the mayor or city manager position. While in discussion, Mayor Weaver called for a vote to appoint the position. There were three votes for, councilmembers Ensign Navy, John Faust, and Sunny Proctor voted for, councilmember Tony Fountain voted against. Item C, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Underwood, planning and zoning director, to present an alcohol license application to council for approval. He informed council that Shawna Coleman, manager of Fred's store located at 970 East Church Street, had completed the application process and the required advocating had been met. The owner is now requesting that the application for a license to sell alcohol, beer, and wine by package be approved. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the license. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Sunny Proctor to give an update on the Roca Pool property. Dr. Proctor stated that there had been no meetings regarding the property since the last council meeting. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that the city called for an election for a place Jim Ling seek on the council. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to call for an election. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized City Clerk Lisa Boyle to discuss election qualifying fees. Ms. Boyle stated that the 2018 election qualifying fees must be set and the amount could be anything up to the maximum of $35. She recommended the maximum amount of $35. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to set the 2018 qualifying fee at 35, and Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item C, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Dell Morsy. Ms. Morsy stated that she was asking permission to have a fundraiser at the City Springs face for a property on March 17th. Ms. Morsy stated that the fundraiser was for Reinhardt College. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to approve the event. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Larry Wilson to present to council plans for an Appalachian folk school located on Chamber Street. Item E, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Kurt Raffel to report on the New Year's Eve celebration. Mr. Raffel thanked the city for its contribution. Item F, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Chief Greg Lovell, Stella Brewer, and Josh Patterson. Ms. Brewer stated that Mr. Patterson was not considered an active employee under our group health insurance policy and would lose coverage in the near future. Chief Lovell spoke about the accident that injured Mr. Patterson approximately two years ago. He stated that he was injured in a line of duty. Mr. Patterson spoke about the problems that he was having with his hands and arms in the accident at this time. Mayor Weaver recognized Matt Bidwell, our current insurance representative, to explain that our current insurance company does not cover nonactive employees, and the only option under our current insurance plan is to put Mr. Patterson on Cobra Insurance. Discussion followed. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion that council table making a decision. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver stated that a committee would be formed consisting of councilmembers Proctor and Snady to study options. Motion carried unanimously. Item G and H, under new business, Mayor Weaver first recognized Matt Bidwell with some other benefits to present to council why he wanted to seek out self-funded insurance options for the city. Mayor Weaver also recognized Kevin Garvry, who cried for downs to present to council why he needed to keep exclusive privilege to seek out self-funded insurance for the city. Mr. Bidwell and Ms. Garvry both spoke extensively. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to honor our original decision, Mr. Garvry, to have exclusive rights to self-funded insurance. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item I, under new business, Mayor Weaver presented to council a contract renewal with EDC for franchise tax collections on television services sold in the city. Mayor Weaver stated that the contract is up for renewal every seven years. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the contract. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion passed by three votes. Sunny Proctor voted against renewing the contract. Mayor Weaver gave an Economic Development Council update. Mayor Weaver recognized economic developer Jerry Netwital to speak of his dismissal by the Economic Development Council. Mr. Netwital stated that he believes that the EDC is an advisory committee and did not have the authority to dismiss him. He stated that he believes that the Pickens County Board of Commissioners, the City Council, Pickens Development Authority, and Jasper Development Authority should make this decision as he believes that the EDC can recommend his dismissal but does not have the authority to carry through with the dismissal. Mayor Weaver stated that in 2016, the EDC made the decision to hire Mr. Netwital as the director of the chamber and that the city council was not involved in that decision at that time. Mayor Weaver stated that he would give Jerry an agenda item at next month's meeting for further discussion. Finance Director Lisa Boyle gave a financial report for the month of January 2018. Lonnie Waters updated council on Rose. Chief Greg Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of January 8th, 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of January 2018. Councilmember John Faust gave an update on JYSI activities. Mayor Weaver gave a statement of his experience as mayor city manager. He stated that his disposition over the last 25 years have allowed the city to come from a $1.6 million budget to a $12.5 million budget without raising taxes and with only one water increase. He also made statements regarding the advantages of having a strong mayor city manager position. Mayor Weaver also spoke about the advantages of keeping the corporate limits of the city and of the services that the city is able to provide. Councilmember Tony Fountain stated that he wished to recognize the loss of city employee David Buchanan. He also thanked the mayor for his service as city manager and his accomplishments over the past 25 years. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next, but the regular council meeting to be held March 5th, 2018.
Entertain a motion. Amy?
Well, I'd like to make a correction.
Okay.
It says council, it's under item B, old business. Councilmembers admitted to no wrongdoing in their decision to separate. That was not my, the question that was asked to me. The question that was asked was why I did it, and I referred the legal back to the attorney. I'm not sure about them two, what they answered that as.
She pretty much drew that conclusion out of that statement, did you not?
Yeah, I didn't go through every question. I never.
Well, no, but, I mean, I don't know that that question was asked, if it was a wrongdoing. I was personally asked, why did I make the decision? You know, what, did I think it was illegal? Well, I referred that back to the attorney.
And you admitted to no wrongdoing. By doing that.
Well, I don't think he stated anything on it that night.
Well, how would you like to have it worked?
Well, I mean, I just wanted, personally, if we're going to take it, we need to put what our answers were. I mean, I think we were all asked different things and we all answered differently.
Well, what we could do is refer this to a, I'm trying to speak.
That's a paragraph y'all talking about.
Item B, on the first page, like, of old business.
Well, what, if I might recall, if I might recall, Mr. Copeland asked specific questions to each councilman. And I think I vaguely remember a, and I'm not trying to write the minutes, but there was a conclusion out of each one of the people who were up here felt like they had done nothing wrong.
All right.
And I believe that was in the minutes as the tape was.
One of them stated that there had been nothing. It was all legal and had been nothing, had been done legally.
That was the, I said, we did everything by the book, and I asked Bill to assure, and Bill said we did everything by the book.
And that's kind of where this came from.
So, you're summarizing basically what she's saying, she just summarized.
I think she picked the best quote out of all the things that we've seen of that night. But the tape is the legal official document. You'd have a copy of it if you liked.
Also, Lisa, on the, when we talked about the employee's case, injury case, I first asked for a closed session before I recommended taking that. I'd like the record to reflect that as well. I have no idea.
A closed session to discuss him.
I agree with that.
Where is that?
It's on the second page, the last paragraph.
We can add that item to the end if you want.
Which item?
To discuss. I think we have him listed for.
He's on the agenda.
Group health continuation, injury, police officer. I ask you and Snady to be the committee.
Right.
And y'all have a report tonight?
We have some information that we would like to.
Could you reveal that and open the forum?
I prefer not to.
I don't think it's.
What we can do, we can work, we have a big group tonight, we can throw this down toward the end and discuss this when we get through with the old business. I think before we get to the mayor's, before we can add that to the last item, would you mind staying, all the people dealing with insurance, for, I know it's a long way home, Matt, but keep that in mind. So, remind me when we get to the group health insurance, be happy to move that, but not beleaguer the issue. With that change, would entertain a motion. I think I got a motion. I didn't ask for a motion, I didn't got it.
Mayor, before, during my discussion on approving the agenda, I think I implied that I would, there are other issues that we would like, that I'd like to discuss in closed session. That's one of them. So, my recommendation again is going to be that we discuss an employee's health and work-related injuries in closed session, and that was also my recommendation based on the busy agenda, that we consider doing that under a special meeting.
And again, we have plenty of time to discuss that issue, and so, we're going to be warned and have, if we accomplish what we have before us tonight, I'm going to feel really good about it. With that, any other discussion? Being on, I'll favor with your hand. Wait, I need a motion. I got a motion, I need my second.
Motion.
Got a motion, second. Discuss, further discussion.
Didn't any of these change, was that correct?
We're moving item B to the end.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Being on, I'll favor with your hand. unanimous, thank you, council. That was, that was the read of the minutes. Okay? Finally. Old business, group health insurance. No one has to leave the room. Come on up, Matt. And with that, we also have Kevin Garvry. You take this as the table, Kevin, you take that, just so that we can continue to keep this as confusing as we possibly can. Matt, we'll let you go first. Tell us what's happened this month.
I was here last Tuesday and left y'all presentation, and just to summarize, we're recommending that the city change to the Georgia Municipal Association. They recommended a $1,500 deductible plan, and currently, there's approximately 80 city employees under insurance, and 70 of them, approximately 70 of them have the $1,500 deductible plan. If you go with the Georgia Municipal Association, $1,500 deductible plan, the total increase in premiums is under 1% to the city, and those premiums would be guaranteed for 21 months, till January 1, 2020. And in addition, there are eligibility rules, we're not getting too deep into the, any personal information, but if we have an employee who's not actively at work, as long as they are receiving compensation in the form of workman's comp and/or salary from the city, that person would still be eligible under the Georgia Municipal Association contract, which I think would address the issue that was previously discussed.
And you addressed that at the workshop.
Yes, I did. So, we're recommending the Georgia Municipal Association going with their medical plan, less than a 1% increase.
What would be the total number? Do you have those for the record?
The total premium based on current enrollment would be $1,062,911, and the current premium is $1,054,064. And so, I think it solves a couple of problems, gives you almost a two-year rate guarantee, and also, it's a fully insured contract, so there's no litigation. And third item is you cover the employee in question, and any future employees in question.
Matt, what's the cost of the $1,000 deductible?
The $1,000 deductible would take, if all the employees enrolled into it, would be $1,104,163, which is 4.75% above current. It's about 4% more than if you do the $1,500 deductible, approximately 4% more.
Matt, are we guaranteed these rates, or are they going to be based on the medical?
They are guaranteed. No, no, I would never do that. These are guaranteed for 21 months, as is.
Matt, without discussing any of the specifics of the workman's comp case, you know what the law, legal limit of the law for reimbursement while under workman's comp is, as a percentage of their base pay? Do you know what that is?
I have no idea. Stella's here, she could probably, might know, but I'm not as workman's comp.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other questions for Matt before we move forward? Have a seat, Matt, if you will, so, recognize Mr. Garvry. Mr. Garvry, we're not able to attend the workshop last Monday.
No.
Whatever day it was.
Tuesday.
But we recognize you today to get us up to speed on what you have.
All right. That is correct. I was unfortunate. I wish I could have joined the workshop and had a chance to go over myself on a proposal in more detail.
If you will, we've all slept, done other things since we've met last, and we have a large group here tonight. We have people at home. This is not just us anymore in a council meeting.
Got you.
Explain a little bit what I asked you to do, if you will, what you're trying to present to the council and how you work with the council, as well as working with what's been proposed. We've got a dual relationship going on here. Tell what's going on in Kevin's mind.
All right. In my mind, I was told, or I was allowed and asked to go on behalf of the city to market a partially self-funded opportunity for the city. You have been fully insured, first, I guess, you've always been fully insured in various ways, and matter of fact, I believe that you were fully insured with the GMA at a point in time in history, so you understand that history. So, what I was asked to do was to bring an alternative funding solution to the city for their employee benefits, and that's exactly what I did. I started by saying how much, how much work it was going to be, because we have such limited data for Blue Cross Blue Shield that I wasn't sure how the outcome was going to end up, but I was going to give it a shot. I was going to use my leverage and our agency's leverage to try to find us the best self-funded opportunity that we could, based on the information provided through your renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield. In addition to the current renewal information, we did have some historical data, which was basically a one-page employee premiums versus claims. So, there was some track record of what those numbers looked like over, at least over the last three years. And what we all decided upon, what we found out, was that our rates are unsustainable. We can't keep getting the rate increases that we're currently getting right now. We have to do something different. And the real true answer to that, in my opinion, is a self-funded option. So, what I was able to do, what I'm very proud that I've done and want to bring to the city council today, is a self-funded option using United Healthcare as our administrator. Now, we're going to use the TPA version, the third-party administrator version, of United Healthcare. They are the number-one claim payer in the world, at least in the United States when it comes to self-funded health plans. So, we get United Healthcare, we get their doctors, we get their hospitals, okay? Now, on top of that, we need to protect the cash flow of the city. How do we do that? As we've gone through the workshops and on every meeting, the key is going out and finding the strongest stop-loss paper to lower our overall risk, keep our cash flow in check, and to overall lower our risk for any type of large catastrophic claim, or a series of claims to keep our costs under control. And what I was able to bring to the table from the stop-loss standpoint is a reinsurance carrier by the name of HCC. They were recently bought two years ago by Tokyo Marine. They are A-plus rated, the largest health reinsurer in the world, and that's globally in the world. They are the largest. And my numbers, and what I hoped for, based on the limited information, my numbers are right on top of your commercial renewal that was originally set with Blue Cross Blue Shield, okay? Matter of fact, there was some savings on the table, maybe, you know, about $6,000 worth of savings on the table if the plan blew up, maximum exposure, walk-away exposure. If we run like we think that we should run, and based on your experience, you should run at about an 80% loss ratio. That is our expected number. And low and behold, your loss ratio for the last rolling 12 months was 80%, and you've still got a 24% rate increase. Again, that doesn't really make sense to me, in the world I live in. However, if you run at the 80% loss ratio under a self-funded plan, there's almost $200,000 worth of savings to the city immediately. If you run better than that, then the money just stays in the account and keeps growing. The idea will be that we would be able to set a reserve up over a number of years, that we can withstand a bad year. And you'll have a bad year, one out of about five, you'll have a bad year. In those other years, you are actually padding your reserve in your reserve account. Also, my plans I'm recommending are exactly the plans you have today, deductibles, co-pays, out-of-pockets, they're exactly the same. So, from a disruption standpoint, plan design standpoint, I'm requesting lower increase in deductibles. We'll keep the same three plans we have in place right now, and then we'll start monitoring it and see how those plans are performing as we move into the renewal of next year. Also, keep in mind, under a self-funded plan, we're going to start getting data, very meaningful data, and that data is going to help us chart our course of action over the next three years, five years, 10 years. So, I'm taking a much higher strategic look at our employee benefits and how to put it together. I'm afraid that the fully insured route has run its course through this city. I'm, I don't know much about the GMA agreement. I have talked to some colleagues of mine, and there are some things that I would highly recommend we get in writing, and I would get the city attorney, Mr. Pickett, involved to get things in writing. I'm, just my understanding, there's some entry fees, there's some exit fees. If you leave them, you won't be able to come back for a couple more years, and I'm worried on this two-year rate deal, what happens when we get a 50% rate increase in two years? What position is that putting us in? And it makes, if you invite me back, it's going to make my job even harder. Not that it can't be done, but it's going to make my job even harder. So, having said all that, I love what I brought to the table. I think that the United Healthcare presence is huge, having those doctors and the hospitals at our fingertips. They are, again, the largest network in the entire country, and the fact that we're backing it up with the strongest paper in the market to handle any of our large catastrophic claims is just huge. And the very last thing I'll say is, our numbers are mature. My numbers are not immature. So, the way that this contract is set up, if we went self-funding and decided at any point in time to leave, the pricing that would be associated with terminating our plan and the run-out costs associated with it, because there will be run-out liability, there'll be claims that belong to us that would take a month or two or three to run through the system. My contract protects that so that our taxpayers in this city will not be on the hook for any run-out liability. Also, I believe that my numbers make sense based on your experience, and as you know, nothing's for free in this world, especially in health insurance. You pay for everything. You pay for everything. The only thing that you can do now is, what you don't pay for, you get to keep. But are my numbers, my numbers, my numbers are right out of where your renewal came in, and that's a high number. Matt's numbers, Mr. Bigwell's numbers are lower than mine. They are lower than mine. I just, I honestly don't know how they make sense that they're that low, but are you in a position where you just are going to be chasing rate after rate? That's what you're doing. If you go with that GMA, you're going to be chasing the lowest saving on the table every year, and that's not a strategic foundation, in my opinion, to have a very successful employee benefits plan.
Anything else?
That's it. And again, I didn't get a chance to go through my proposal.
If you will just sit there, and I'm going to let the council ask you a few questions. They're about to make the church decisions. Jim, do you have anything to add to this with your meetings with, I think, both parties?
No, I think we had.
No, I think we had discussions on Matt's earlier. We also distributed an evaluation from Point North on the two plans. I think if council is ready to make a decision, so be it.
With that, I'd like to open the floor to the council to ask either or both parties questions. So that we can get a little vote.
I'm surprised.
No.
The investment we're making in our city, Kevin, those funds that we accumulate, are they restricted in any way? Do we have to maintain that fund at a certain level to make sure that we could pay for a bad year? Or how does that money sit there?
The state of Georgia does not require you to make a minimum fund. The state of Florida does, and I have some school systems in the state of Florida, and they make you basically put in a lockbox what would be equivalent to two months' worth of claim activity in the event that they left, and that way the taxpayers wouldn't be holding the liability for that. The way that my plan is set up and the contracts that I've written, you'll have that run-out liability already incorporated into these numbers. So the fund that you'll need in that regard would be covered and is included in my numbers.
If you have these lower numbers that Matt has come back with, would your numbers be lower too, do you think? Or is that impossible to predict?
It's impossible to predict. I had a wide variety and ranges of numbers, and quite frankly, the lower numbers that came in did not make sense. It would not be something that I could bring to the council and feel good about it. I think that we'd be in exactly the same position in 12 months as we are today. So therefore, the value added that I would bring to the table would stand. So I think the numbers that I brought to the table now, they wouldn't stand the test of time, and they would really set us up from a foundation standpoint to allow us to win in subsequent years.
Matt, if we leave early, is there a penalty?
From GMA?
You give us a guarantee right for two years? If we leave after one year, is there a penalty?
With GMA, it is after one month.
Okay.
And one other thing, GMA, they do provide much better reporting than Blue Cross does. We can't get actually detailed claims from GMA.
Matt, what were we looking at with Blue Cross Blue Shield? I know we talked at 30.
The initial, yeah, the initial renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield was 1.256 million.
But with 24%?
That was a 24... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Old man here, you got, excuse me. The initial renewal from Blue Cross was 1.308. It was over 1.3 million from Blue Cross. And part of your reason you're getting such a good deal from GMA is that they're still using that Blue Cross network, which is incredibly well-discounted. The GMA does not have nearly the administrative charges that you see from a direct Blue Cross Blue Shield account. And you're going into a large self-insured pool of municipalities, and it's well-managed. Your associates actually oversees it. They're not using a Blue Cross drug card, they're using a Netnet drug card. It's just a very efficient pool, and it's guaranteed.
But Blue Cross offered this like 24% increase.
It was a 24%. Yeah. And by going through the GMA, they very aggressively.
Matt, this proposal that you're proposing for GMA, is this something that you, that's just been by the wire to you recently? Or is this something that could have been brought to the city of Jasper before now?
Are you talking about the Georgia Municipal Association? I don't think we're here at the workshop where you were. What I discussed at the workshop was that when you all first went with Blue Cross, it was maybe five or six years ago.
A long time.
Was longer than that. Whatever it was, when you all went with Blue Cross, we actually took you guys, in fact, what happened is...
You're the one that took us.
Yeah, yeah, what happened is, at the time, we had you all with United Healthcare. And United Healthcare gave you all a 50% plus increase after one year. And we then went out and shopped you guys. And Blue Cross Blue Shield, we actually went to Blue Cross Blue Shield Direct. And then we went to GMA. We actually went to both parties at this time. This was, again, initially. And the Blue Cross Direct actually did better than the GMA. And so that's why you all ended up with Blue Cross Direct. Now, what happens is, once you're in the Blue Cross system or in the GMA system, the two of them will not allow the other to, they basically have a non-compete clause. So once you got into the Blue Cross Direct, GMA would refuse to give a proposal because you're all already with Blue Cross. And conversely, if I've got a city in the GMA pool, Blue Cross will not talk to them directly. What happened is, Blue Cross Direct dug their heels in and said, "If you've got an employee not actively at work, we are not going to allow you to keep them on coverage. We are going to make you put them on Cobra." And with that information, I knew GMA would have different eligibility rules. I called Michael Falk at GMA. He confirmed that we could cover an employee not actively at work as long as their compensation was coming in. And I used that to get a release letter from Blue Cross so I could go to GMA Direct. But that's how it transpired. And I'm not even sure if the ASO proposal will cover the employee not actively at work.
The third-party administrator for this is going to also be Blue Cross Blue Shield.
No, your administrator, excuse me, you're correct. Your administrator is going to be Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. That'll be on Georgia Municipal, through the Georgia Municipal Association pool.
Is partially funded growing, Kevin, or is it? How is this type of product that you're presenting to us relative to traditional insurance? Look for the future?
It's growing by leaps and bounds. Right now, about 43% of the groups of your size, maybe a little slightly larger, are currently self-funding, apparently self-funding their healthcare plan. And they predict in the next five years, it'll be 75%. So it's growing by leaps and bounds because the decision-makers, the CEOs, and the presidents of these companies are just... And I don't think that the Affordable Care Act helped anything. I think it made people even more upset. And I think that the rural CEOs of the country are just tired of the increases, and they want more stability, and they want to be able to have their data and not have people outside of their organization hide behind the data and then jam a 25% rate increase down your throat without any explanation. So these plans are growing by leaps and bounds. And, you know, at the end of the day, whatever's the best course of action for the city of Jasper, I will fully support. And I think that if you do decide to go to the GMA route, I think that my presence alone allowed that to happen, and that's a good thing, even if I don't win the business, so.
Kevin, say you need to go the other route, but we plan to create a pool. You said two months' worth of something. We can create a pool the next time it comes around, and you have better numbers, and we have something, we can already have a pool established. How would that help us? Or could it?
It would help. I mean, if we can get meaningful data, there's a way out. My concern, because I don't know much about the GMA product, that's just not my expertise. But what you're getting now from Blue Cross Blue Shield will not work. It's just, we got lucky, and we were able to get something competitive without asking health questions. But if the GMA product can provide better data, more meaningful data, it puts us in a better position to be self-funded at some point in time. We've accomplished it right now. We're in a good position right now to transfer over to the self-funded plan. But if you do go the GMA route, by no means does it mean that this over went.
Well, no, we appreciate all the work you did. It's just that I think if you might have had better numbers, and we could already have a full set of plans, it'd make even better numbers.
What are we down to, bottom line now, Jim? Do you know, Jim or Lisa, do you know what his quote versus Matt's quote? Or where are we on the bottom line on that for this year? Do we know?
My numbers come in right on top of, if you accepted the renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield, my numbers on a maximum basis come in right on top of that. If you accepted the traditional Blue Cross Blue Shield...
The traditional 24%.
Yes.
Not the GMA.
Not the GMA. And again, I wasn't at the workshop. That GMA came out of nowhere, and that's, I was focusing on trying to get my numbers with what I had to work with, which was a 24% increase.
You should have watched the video.
So do we know that number? 100,000 difference?
I have numbers, well...
I believe it was 14%.
Yeah. Different, that number, the dollar-wise, I don't know.
200,000.
The increase at one time is going to be 20, it came in originally around 28 to 30. You worked it down to those numbers.
Right, the actual increase had the premiums at 1.3 million. And what's coming in at GMA is just over $1,060,000.
So we've got to think of a savings here.
I mean, and that's guaranteed. I mean, that's probably lower than what they expect self-insure, that it covers my disabled employee.
And that was why I asked that question, if it was guaranteed or based on...
It is 100% guaranteed.
Because of the big difference in the 5% versus the 24% increase.
Oh, yeah.
So that was my concern.
The plans are higher. The plans are a little bit different. I would hope that it's the same network that you're currently using right now with Blue Cross and not a stripped-down version of it.
Same network.
Okay, and the drug card is the same and all that. There are increases to the plan design.
Any other questions, council?
One more quick.
Okay.
Kevin, in a two-year period, for you to build a self-insured plan, what kind of numbers could you estimate that that cost in my bullet point? Not a hard question to ask.
Well, it's not too difficult.
With conventional insurance, we get that feedback pretty rarely.
At your loss ratio this year that I was, that I saw, let me back up for a second. There's three components to a renewal with a self-funded plan. What is the administration? So from the UMR, United Healthcare piece, I would give us a two- or three-year recap. That's a small number. So you can get a two- or three-year recap. On the stop-loss side, running at an 80% loss ratio, we would be in the single-digit range. And at an 80% loss ratio, we would have saved $200,000 to the health plan. And at the 80%, we would have probably had a rate pass on the claims piece. So we're talking somewhere in the single digits on a smaller piece of the whole pie. So a single digit, probably somewhere in the 30% range of what we spend. The 70% range is what we hold aside to pay claims. I think at the same loss ratio, that would be a pass. That's the biggest piece. And then the middle piece, which is our fixed cost, which is the insurance component, would be somewhere in the single-digit range.
Any other questions, Matt?
Just to reemphasize, if we do leave the GMA, there's no fees, no nothing like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Roger Schultz. I'm not a resident of the city, I do live in a county, but most of my career has been spent in the area of employee benefits, particularly on self-funded and fully insured medical plans. And I don't know how, in a conversation like this, you can make a decision based on two different, very simple exposures. Most of these men know a lot about what they're doing. And, but I would be happy to, as a third party, look at this at no cost to the city to give you my opinion, totally objective, I have no financial...
Well, thank you, Mr. Schultz. With that, I'll let Matt explain the issues at hand as far as timeframe, so.
Would you do that?
Matt, would you address the fact that we've got to make some decisions immediately based on our lapse, or maybe a week, could get a month or two?
You can only pay the $1.3 million renewal from Blue Cross.
Then start looking into our insurance because...
But I, you know, I think you all are down to where you need to make a decision.
Yes, yes.
Where's our deadline, April 1st? We have to make a decision. How much advance of that?
What happens is, if you don't, what we're talking about is disruption with the employees and having ID cards in their hands by April 1. And if indeed you're making a change, you really are, it's a matter of, I've had, don't get me wrong, I've had cities vote on the last day of the month to make a change. Employees are two or three days, two or three weeks with no proof of insurance.
Well, what we got here, council...
We're pretty much down to the wire.
What we got here, council, is a 1% increase, or what was the number, 4%?
Under, if you go with the 15th priority, Dr. Bullock, it's 28%.
Okay, and a chance of hurting Kevin's feelings, which I called Kevin in and spent hours with him and talked him into going on this crusade. He has accomplished, love your death, Kevin, and mean it, accomplished exactly what we wanted. We got the council to deny a renewal close to what I thought we should be able to do. Because I couldn't imagine a $300,000 increase when this hit my desk.
Well, then why don't we budget for 50% increase?
Well, we could discuss what we've got here before us tonight and move forward because we got pretty close to what we asked for. And Kevin, I'll take your lumps tomorrow.
Can I? I understand what you're saying.
Yes, yes, okay.
I agree with it. But I just, my question is, can we do some workshops to fully understand, as we go down the road?
I agree, I agree. We need to be more aware of what Kevin has to offer, even Mr. Schultz, if he wants to come out of retirement to talk about what we can do. But right tonight, we are on the premises of having major issues, or to go back to the 1.3 million, which we don't want to renew. And we've been offered, and GMA's not my favorite at all. Well, I've got a history with them, dealing with our insurance. But it seems you're bringing me a different GMA than we left a few years ago because you helped us lead that organization.
Yes, and the thing is, Kevin, this might help if we can, you work with us in these workshops that we can prepare ourselves. Like I said, would it be somewhat beneficial to already have the fund created, already have the numbers? That way, you're not working with anyone.
Right. With that, you kind of understand where we're at, Kevin, with this, and you did a great job. And we really appreciate the assistance of Jasper. You, as a taxpayer living inside the corporate limits of Jasper, appreciate it. We've got almost a $300,000 savings to our taxpayers for our insurance.
I understand.
And you said yourself, you can't match those numbers for us tonight or even this month.
No.
And you feel somewhat good as a citizen that you have got $300,000 savings for the council to vote.
Right.
And we appreciate your work, Matt. We don't mean to throw you on the bus if you weren't going to do that other month. You did, you were not going to plan to go to GMA.
With the police officer?
Yes.
Yes, I was.
Well, which is in that direction.
I mean, that was the thing. And by the way, if that hadn't happened, you may wouldn't have put off this.
Right.
Well, that happened, yeah.
With that, all the information that we have this evening, and we've been beating on this one since January, would entertain a motion, council?
I'd like to make the motion that we take the GMA offer, but I would like to see us do the $1,000 deductible versus 1,500.
That number you said, that's a motion. But what was that number for the record?
1,104, 163, that's 4.75% above.
It's about $40,000 more.
48, 40, 52,000.
52,000 more. Okay, Lisa, we always ask the question.
What did you have budgeted for?
I budgeted something like that, 15%.
So we've got that coverage, okay? So that motion's got some valid value to it. I got the minute second.
Let me clarify, he recommended that with a $1,000.
The $1,000 instead of hitting the...
Instead of the 1,500.
$500, a lot of money in the emergency room.
I read the second.
Got a motion, a second discussion. Any further discussion?
Can we somehow, with our budgeted money that we are not going to spend, set that aside at least to potentially establish a fund so that we can further explore other options?
It's up to y'all.
It'll be money not spent. Hope it'll be a savings to the citizens.
Well, we can do it in a way where if we needed it, we could use it. But at least in the spirit, we're trying to plan ahead a little bit more.
I'd like to change my motion to go to the $1,000.
That's what you said.
We just want to change my motion to the $1,000 deductible and create, so we're going to create a fund.
Well, let's just back this thing all the way. Well, let's just back this thing all the way out.
Yes. Put a motion on floor.
I got a motion on floor without that change. That's a recommendation. And if you want to back this up, I got you to rescind your motion and we'll back it all the way up in a second.
Okay. I rescind my motion.
Okay. And you approve that for a second. Now you want to make your motion?
I would like to go back with the thousand dollar deductible and work toward a fund, a medical fund that can help us with the insurance hopefully in a couple of years.
John, you have a motion on the floor.
And you rescind his motion? And that's, don't make any more confusion. It's going to be difficult to write this down anymore. Okay. Got the motion and leaving the money that was budgeted there and not be using any other items such as.
We can strike that out.
Exactly.
But my, my point is we need to be looking at this center than, we thought we were looking at a lot center this year. And if we can use that money in the future to establish a fund, as we discussed, then that'd be great.
Or in two years, they go up fifty percent, we got a backup.
So what's the motion?
The motion is go with a thousand dollar deductible, take what was budgeted for them and put into a medical, a pool for medical insurance.
Lisa, can you explain the issues that that would cause our auditors and whatever else that we may have based on that? Because we think, we need the money to be spent at the end of the year. We can't hold it, carry it over as a government.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure we can talk to the auditors about it, but we're... Are you talking about setting up a separate cash account?
A sinking fund or I don't understand.
I mean, a separate cash account or?
Basically a medical fund.
A medical fund.
For the insurance, for in case, just so that we have it there, so we have just a backup.
Are we approving a new cash account?
Yeah.
Saying this for self, sir, we're just saying it just in case.
John?
Sir?
At the end of the year, we got to balance our budget. We don't have money sitting in funds such as this. We will have retained revenue. We can't call it profit or anything like that. We got to start budgeting next year from zero. If you start doing this, we got to create a sinking fund for this. But we, every year, when we set our budgets, we got to work from a balancing issue, not creating this. And we can always, we can always raise the taxes.
It will be in our fund balance that you're in if we don't spend on this.
Right, but we've got another fund.
Unless you decide to spend it somewhere else.
Yes.
I'm not trying to raise taxes or I'm not trying to, I'm trying to dedicate this energy for looking at other options again. And I'll rescind my recommendation and I can discuss it later.
Why don't you make this a motion? We'll leave, let John do what you're.
Well, let's, I'll tell you what we can do. I'll rescind that motion, make motion we do the thousand dollar deductible. We can discuss what we can do in the workshops to come the future. And hopefully maybe we can create something back there.
Why don't you make the motion, please, plead up for our books? That we accept GMA offer and that Mr. Goddard is going to be at our request because he just lived right over there. And so we don't leave that in this motion. We just need to accept this so that we can move forward tonight.
I make the motion that we take the thousand dollar deductible.
Okay? Need a second? And a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Ben, in all favor, both of your hands. That's unanimous. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Kevin. I think you saved the city three hundred thousand dollars. I don't have about that anywhere. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want me to stay around for the end of the meeting?
I think item B, I think item B, we just handled.
Mm-hmm. You already handled.
Thank you. And I believe you can, you gave.
Well, you don't need to worry.
Well, you said that you could cover it to your majesty.
But we had, well.
We talked about an executive session.
You can't, well, let's touch on item B right now that we can talk about in public. We can talk, say a few things. We had a police officer who was injured in the line of duty. He's had nerve damage. And our insurance is about to drop him. And we're trying to, as a council, to figure out a way to keep him insured for his health insurance, much less his injury. And that's what this item is all about, if you've kept up with the council meetings in the past. Would you like to discuss that, just a little bit of what we want to move forward, what Mr. Bidwell? Mr. Matt, dealing with our workers' comp, he draws workers' comp. And talk a little bit about him running out of insurance and just the record. And then we may not have to go into close sessions.
Without naming names or just in general, we cannot have an employee covered under your health insurance unless they're an active employee. And so one of the issues we ran across with the current plan was that the current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan would not allow somebody who's not actively at work to stay on the plan for indefinite time period. And by us requesting through the Georgia Municipal Association, their eligibility rules were a little different. And they allow us to keep somebody who's not actively at work on the coverage as long as they're still receiving a certain level of workers' comp payments and any other compensation from the city. And that is why I think this is now no longer an issue. Because we did not know, thirty days ago, we did not know that we had GMA that would actually pick up and handle the situation.
That's, that's what we want. And if we have a problem that the numbers don't work, we'll have to address it in a different way. And our goal is not to have a police officer who is home injured from working in the city of Jasper loses health insurance is what we're trying to accomplish.
Or in your employee.
Well, especially this one, we're dealing with the right now. Thank you, Matt. Let's go to item C. No actual need necessary. Row, rover full property.
Well, where am I at? Just a quick update. Unfortunately, I've not been able to get with the development authority, but I have had some activity around the building. I went to the building and with the inspector and looked at it. And the building is very solid. And we're talking about the older building in the front. And I think that in my opinion, we don't need to raise it until we make a decision on what we're going to be doing with it. He suggested that there were some roof leaks. I think that roof looks pretty solid. Unfortunately, despite all the rain, I hadn't been able to get in the house when it was raining. Well, I haven't been in the house when it was raining. It'd been easy, easy to access it. I've also been looking at it and have had some other opportunities to look at the possibility of using those other buildings in different ways that may benefit the city. And so I'm a little remiss in that I hadn't discussed it with the development authority, but there is a lot of activity going on with it. And I see we have two of our development authority members here. One of them is on the committee. And I'll just try to do a better job of getting people together here. There's been a little bit going on. But I'll try to get everybody together and kind of see what our plan can be. I think it, we've been talking a lot about downtown revitalization. And I think it needs to be part of that plan. We'll do better if we all work together and come up with a plan that talks about our whole downtown area, not just one building at a time. And some of y'all are aware that the Chamber spent some time over in Rome. They're one of Georgia's, I can't remember what the east, excellent main streets, which was a historical restoration they did over the last twenty years. Obviously, we don't need to do anything on that scale. But there is some energy behind our downtown alliance committee at the Chamber and this committee that we've had to start looking at what we would really like our main street to look like in ten or fifteen or twenty years and start moving in that direction. And I would like to see that building, which is very complimentary to the law offices across the street, probably built at the same era, maybe by the same builder. But, and then from an aesthetics standpoint, I think there's a lot that could be done. I'll also share that I've met with an architect to look at an entertainment interview venue. And again, the location was discussed in that area, but that doesn't mean that we're limited to that area. And I think for our longer range plans, we, we need to kind of formalize some of those plans. I'm expecting a straw budget from that meeting, meaning he's going to kind of lay out what he thinks it would cost. And then depending on that cost would determine our planning and how we would pay for it and so forth and so on. So that's, that's kind of the summary of my update.
All right, thank you. Water pollution control plant expansion project, with Looney, with David.
Mayor. If you all remember, at our workshop, we discussed a number of things concerning a upgrade to our wastewater plant pollution control plant expansion. Of course, council, we need to discuss a expenditure of approximately thirty thousand dollars. And Ben Terpsey has not gotten this to quote yet. We expected in that amount to start the permit process for this expansion.
Council might recall that at the workshop, Mr. Turner C. was here. David, to give a little update as to what Ben will be doing for us.
They're going to gather data and stuff. We're looking at changing the location, where we're going to actually discharge this sewage. We have the paperwork that council would like to see it. Limitations on dumping our waste into Poquet Creek because it is so small. The limitations they're going to put on us are very tight. And we're afraid that we may not be able to meet those limitations sometimes. And that's why the city is looking at pumping the sewage over to Long Swamp Creek below drinking water intake. There were limitations, of course, because the stream is larger, it will not be a string river. And that's why there are going to be some extra costs now. Because as you guys made aware the other night, he has already done a lot of this work already on Poquet. But now that we're going to move, and also too, Jim was talking earlier, going into Poquet, we may have to actually cool this water with refrigeration. And maybe even heat exchange and heat it whenever it's cool because of the being a trapped stream, which I'm not sure.
Territory.
Territory. And it's, I mean.
Much smaller volume than Long Swamp Creek. This will be, the decision on this will be necessary in order to start the permit process and certainly the design.
If I might, David and I have discussed several times over the years that needing the water alone from the wastewater treatment, we won't call it the wastewater treatment plan here, so we'll know what we're talking about. A few years ago, the EPD changed it so that they put water pollution control plants in the middle of subdivisions. Just sound effect. But to the wastewater treatment. But anyway, this treatment facility that we're talking in the Poquet, the creek we're talking about, Poquet is the one that runs through Arrowhead Country Club. And more often than not, the water that we discharge is the flow in that creek. And what we talked about before is taking all the eight hundred thousand gallons that we're treating per day, about seven hundred, seven fifty today probably, pumping over by the Dairy Queen over the ridge and taking it all the way down to our raw water intake. And everyone's going to say, are we going to treat and drink wastewater? What we want to do is splash it up against our weirder and so we can count it as far as water going downstream and might even get a water treatment permit increase. So it got two or three different folds to it. And the other option we talked the other night in the, in the meeting with Mr. Ben is that we might work with Arrowhead Country Club, or might be able to work with Arrowhead Country Club and get a land application permit in the midst of all this addition and costs. We should be able to get to that. Where we would be able to sprinkle the golf course, the golf course in the future is going to have a very difficult time pulling any water for any golf course. And that's going to be a big issue, not just at Arrowhead, but all over the country. And that water would be reused water and almost drinkable quality. But this is, this would really give us an increase in the future if we were able to get that permit along with discharging all the way over to the larger creek.
I think that pump station would allow us to do that. And also another thing we can do with being able to pump it is we're going to need, as that land develops across from Goss Tractor, I'm going to say the name of that church, I said it wrong.
Shalhoub.
Shalhoub. Something else for the night. But we need to run a line out with that to get our leak check. So where we can get our leak check on this side of town, where we'll have another dump site. And we can do that. Whenever we run this line out, we can get another dump site somewhere county administration area.
And then the leak check is about a three-quarter million dollar.
Every year, and this is not allow us, I mean, another.
Well, three-quarter million dollar asset to us.
Revenue.
Yeah, it may actually go on maybe even twice a million, you know, we're doing this. I mean, I don't have that.
And that goes to the Poquet now?
Well, we're discharging, actually treating the leak check. But we need, we need, we need a permission tonight to have a thirty thousand dollar expenditure allotted to Turner C. Engineering for their work. Is that correct, Jim?
For me, of course.
Yes. Intain a motion?
I make the motion that we approve up to thirty thousand dollars for Mr. Turner C. to proceed with engineering on Long Swamp Creek.
I think plans for the wastewater treatment, water pollution control plant, we think we covered. Need a second? Motion's second. You get that, Lisa? What we're doing? And discussion?
Did we budget money for this last year?
Yes.
We spent it?
No.
You have to poke it.
But did we have someone that we talked about the other night? I mean, even.
This money was budgeted this year.
Water detention. Water detention, I think, for your budget. Oh, okay.
So we did budget money and it was spent on design for Poquet?
No. This money's budgeted this year for this project.
This year it is for this. Last year, we did spend some money on Poquet because he has actual design for the children.
Right, yes, yes, yeah. For they, basically to get, to move to this point here.
Yeah, that is their opinion also too, of the engineers, Turner C., that we moved because of that, because of the children and the, and the increase in water.
This isn't committing to, again, I'm, I'm not, I know I'm asking a lot of questions because I have a lot of questions. We just beat two guys up over a million and this is going to be a lot more than that. It's, we just, and I know we've had a relationship with Ben for a long time. I'm not suggesting that we change. But where are the checks and balances on design and cost and so forth and so on? When you're talking about a project of this size?
It's going to be in whatever you do, your long grant, whatever we get, they'll set that amount.
Okay.
And they won't, they won't allow no fictitious figure. I mean, that'll be something where he can meet a certain guideline. You know? Because it, once we get into the actual, that part, I'm correct, the design build part will come out of the long grant. It won't just be something that he pulls up.
Well, I'm enduring about a lot of things and this is one of them. So I'm trying to learn as fast as I can.
To get to that point, what we could do, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to mention, too.
Yeah, because you're correct. I know a lot of this is already, one of y'all run it up tonight, that this has already been, a lot of this has already been designed. A lot of this has already been done. Because council turned the same thing down in two thousand eight.
Right.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ben, in all favor, both of your hands. Thank you, council. Next item, item E.
We still got some on this, though. We were going to also talk, take a vote on Poquet versus Long Swamp Creek. We need some direction on that. Unless you want to include that in the permit process.
Well, that's what, I thought that was impelling. Also, is he going to move forward with a potential land application as well? We've been moving in that direction.
He can continue on either on Long Swamp or on Poquet. See, it's down at the ready with y'all and which one.
We got to go, you're right, we got to go, we got to go Long Swamp.
Yeah, because that would be a regulation. He said we may.
Clarify, clarify. Give me a motion.
I made the motion.
Well, we got that, we got that, but I want to go ahead and add Poquet Creek to this motion.
I'd like council to make a decision on whether to discharge Po Cat Creek or Long Swamp Creek. Suggestion for our engineering, we go with Long Swamp Creek, saving money in treatment and also in temperature, or in the temperature of the discharge.
I thought that's what Tom was just talking.
This was thirty thousand dollars permit, what I heard the motion.
Right. Along for that purpose, okay?
Okay. If you're telling me Long Swamp Creek's included in that motion?
I did.
Perfect, alright. And then also one, the measure for council's consideration. If we could decide to spend up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in pre-designed work that was discussed.
Let's go back to our motion. Just get this thirty thousand spent first. Okay? 'Cause we need to get that cleared up for Ben, he's gotta work and we're talking about.
He also requested.
But let's do that in a different, let's do that in a different motion. If you don't mind, since we've not discussed that. I got a motion for thirty thousand dollars to allow Mr. Turpsey, our Turpsey Engineering to pursue discharge in from Po Cat Creek to Long Swamp. I need a second.
Second.
The motion is second, discussion. Ben in all favor, what was showing hands? She ran, now Jim.
What was yours?
Well, we, we called that right.
I agree. Also, I'd like council to consider improving an expenditure of up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of pre-designed work that would allow to maybe quick start this project. Ben suggested it could save as much as six months if we started this work before, during the permit process.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollar hit, was that budgeted? I don't think that was budgeted.
And did we do that on Po Cat Creek as well? Pre-designed?
And pre-designed, that implies there's more design because.
That's actual plan, and this would still be reimbursed through the long, correct?
Yes. The intent was that this could be applied to the loan once it's approved.
He talked about his payment up front, I can't remember what it was, do you remember?
Payment up front was the permit. And then a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a payment to allow him to start pre-designed work and fast track the project up to six months.
We're gonna do this money that we have, no budget for?
I did not budget for that one. I didn't know about it at the time, so it's no, not in the budget. It would be, if you spend it, it's gonna be, our fund balance is, we're planning on getting reimbursed by the long.
We don't, we don't feel revengeable.
There is, there is a time period also too that we're going to. Our permit is actually gonna change and within a three-year period, we will, there'll be a time period that we'll have to get completely out of the lead check distance, as we talked the other night. Because our permit is still gonna change, whether we do it anytime or not, our permit is gonna change on pneumonia. And without a approved plan, we're not gonna be able to meet those goals or those guidelines. So if we do not fast track and go ahead, which in all opinions, I almost posit that it's reimbursed as soon as we receive our long grant money, that will be reimbursed. But if we do get out of that, then we.
We've not been approved, we've not been approved for grant, yes. We've not been approved for grant.
Yeah, well, I mean.
More the long.
What, what, have we budgeted for the water debt? Are we, everything that we've budgeted for water, we have nothing in there that we can pull from? I'm asking.
I believe there's a fund balance that could be used.
Yeah, we talked about.
Impressed fund balance.
We talked about workshop and I think Ben couldn't do it or something.
He came up the other night, did a presentation.
Yeah, I see there was like ten minutes.
What, what is the budget? I mean, do you know what we have in the budget that we could utilize up to this?
No, I don't have a fund balance with me. About to.
This is something that wasn't budgeted, but we could entertain a motion to approve the hundred and twenty thousand, move forward with the, it looks like we may be searching for funds.
We just can wait until next month for certain desire.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, let's table it, we'll discuss it at the workshop and see what we are, as far as our funds.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Ben in all favor, what was showing hands? Thank you, council. Polycor Source update, David. Jim, your name. I'm gonna replace my name with your name.
Alright.
Update on our trip the other day to Polycor.
The other day, the mayor, along with myself and Jim, John Klein, and Ben Turpsey.
With Lisa.
And Lisa, went to the tour of the mines. And the quarries were just in the forties. And they approached us, I guess they originally approached us on this project, to begin with, they approached us.
Actually, we approached them. And John Klein, who talked to them before or something.
And so we went through the facility and at that time, they let us know that they have basically a million gallons a day available to the city. Whether we're gonna treat it or do it well, I don't know if we've decided on.
We decided that meeting Ben is going to approach the EPD to see if that water will be useful, could be used by the city of Jasper instead of pumping it out or sending it down to Cherokee County. Ultimately ended up in the Gulf of Mexico. So that's what we're gonna find out, if there was really any water there. So that's what we're at.
Once we have that approval, then we can bring the council ideas on which way to go with it. And right now, we just need to know if there's something the safety is gonna allow.
Right, that's what we decided after all that meeting, is there really any water there that they will let us have? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item A on our new business, Chamber Hotel Motel Audit and Economic Development Audit. Lisa, could you tell the council what we, where we're at and what we're doing?
Around the first of February, we, my, our auditor contacted me to contact the Chamber to get some information from them. And up until last Thursday, we hadn't heard anything from the Chamber. We had tried numerous times and with no cooperation and, but finally, I talked to the mayor Thursday, we called Jerry Nekotol, he got with their accountant, and she has, as of today, sent the information that we need to our auditor, or their auditor, that, well, we're, the auditor we are using, so that is why it ended up on the agenda.
And we need continued cooperation because the city of Jasper sends approximately seventy five thousand dollars a year hotel motel tax to the Chamber of Commerce. We have to stand for those numbers and we also send sixteen thousand dollars a year to the economic development, using the government to our economic development, and that needs to be audited.
So I find it interesting that if it were February first, and I don't know when it was.
It was the first week of February.
I know when Cheryl told me that, what the request had been, which was a digital copy of our entire books. And so we did push back on that. We had a work session last week and as the chairman of the board, this was not mentioned. I had had a conversation with Cheryl about it about two weeks ago. I'd sent, I had a conversation with Jim Looney about it and told them that we are perfectly glad and happy to cooperate in any way that we possibly can.
We just couldn't get a call back. I mean.
Well, first of all, I don't understand why an elected official is participating in an audit as opposed to our city manager. And also had a conversation with our city manager about it and sent the email, making sure that Cheryl, our accountant and our treasurer, reached out to Jim, and they haven't been able to make contact. Cheryl and Clay Pilgrim, the auditor CPA, have been playing phone tag for quite some time, and I think it's unreasonable that.
She called him once, that's what he told me. She only called once and he was in a meeting.
So we're trying to cooperate, Lisa, but I don't, and I'm upset.
Let me, let me bring this to order, please. You're acting as, are you acting as a council member or as the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce?
I guess I'm acting as a Chamber of Commerce right now.
You need to be acting as a councilman.
Okay. The Chamber will be glad, I'll make sure as a councilman that the Chamber will cooperate.
That's all we ask for.
Yes, sir.
And in order to do an audit, whether you're an elected official or not, you have to have all the numbers to see if our numbers are used properly. And that's not, shouldn't not be a big deal, because we're dealing with funds of the citizens of Jasper, Georgia, who own their business, who pay the dues. All our auditors, the guy do is go and do the inspection or the audit, and that, we just need a little cooperation, that's all we ask for. And there was no reason for this item to make it this far. I called Jerry Nekotol Thursday late, and Jerry said that he'd reach out, and I've not heard anything back until today. So it was there, and it's worth discussing because we're in a good relationship.
Yeah, we do.
Let's work on that. Okay. Next item is the Economic Development Council update. I asked Jerry Nekotol to come this evening, and I also asked Ken Penn. Ken couldn't make it, so I asked our two representatives of the city of Jasper, our economic, on our Economic Development Council, Mike Dentson and Gary Cogan. I'll ask those two gentlemen to come right here, and I'll ask Jerry to come right here. Just have to see, get ready, Jerry, pull up, Mike, I need one more. Councils, there's been some, I think probably misunderstandings as to what's going on with our Economic Development Council and our efforts to work with the Chamber of Commerce to provide economic development for Jasper and Pickens County. I understand the issue has gone to the county government, and now our chance for the city government to determine what the issues are. I, Jerry came to the council last month, I thought he had been dismissed, and, but I gave him an opportunity to speak, and he spoke that maybe he had not been dismissed. And so we're here tonight to explain what the Economic Development Council did and why, if it was wrong and why it was wrong, if it was wrong or if it was correct. But we need to understand where our funding is going when we send money to the Chamber as a conduit to provide a service to the citizens of Jasper and Pickens County. Mike, could you explain what took place at our economic development meeting?
Well, to go back to the initial start of this commission, two thousand eight Chandler Sanford, Sanford Chandler, got together with a group of people to see if there was some way to start a movement toward economic development in Pickens County. He got together with the, at that time, sole commissioner, mayor, myself as the chairman of Jasper Development Authority, and Tommy Lindsay as the chairman of the Pickens County Industrial Authority. And we started a, put together a plan to have an eight-person board or commission that would work toward bringing business into Pickens County. We started with the idea that the Pickens County and the city of Jasper would bring monies through their budget process to pay for a person to work directly for the commission and try to bring business in. We would help in, help with that in any way possible. Each person on that permanent commission that we established brings a, appoints a person that has some type of expertise or some, something to bring to the table on a, on a basis of, of what can I help with, with bringing business in. So it was a group that came together to start that. Funding was developed, we approved by your budgetary process, commission searched for and hired Jerry Nekotol as a economic develop, development person, I'll use that term. And so we worked with Jerry throughout several years, I don't remember exactly when he came to work. We, at a particular time when we were stagnant as far as new industry coming in or chances at new industry, Jerry worked very hard, he did, did a good job from the standpoint of, when I worked with him and he and I worked together on, with several different situations. We developed some criteria for him to be, for the job to be judged by. We evaluated him. We determined that we were going to go in a different direction. And we, after discussing with him, then we determined he was no longer our economic development person. And.
Go, go back just a moment for about a year, year and a half ago, when we were asked as Economic Development Council to allow Jerry to not only serve as the economic developer, but also to serve as the Chamber, what's your term, the title, Jerry, president or director?
Executive director.
Executive director. Explain what happened there, please, for the.
We, there was a, there was a board in the Chamber of Commerce director position. We, we're, actually, we were approached, and I discussed it with Jerry, asking if he was interested in that. We were approached and discussed the fact that that could be a dual role. The Chamber of Commerce, my understanding of the situation at the time discussed by them would allow Jerry to be the executive director. He would continue to be the economic development director and.
His salary would be paid how?
Salary within change with the economic development director job. We, there was a, amount of monies paid by Pickens County.
How much does Pickens County and city of Jasper pay?
Fifty-six thousand dollars for, from the county and sixteen thousand some odd dollars from city of Jasper.
Okay.
Those monies were paid to, Chamber of Commerce was the conduit for that, they actually did pay to Jerry, and that was, we allowed him to, based off, to continue the job of economic development director and to take on the position of executive director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Did you ask anybody to do that, such as the Jasper City Council or the county commission?
No.
Why did you not?
We did the hiring, we, he worked under the bylaws, he worked under our direction.
Would you read the bylaws of the page that you felt like you had the right to terminate Mr. Nekotol?
It's under the powers section, the Economic Development Council shall have the following powers and duties. All authority, powers and duties to do what is necessary, proper and convenient, carry out its purpose as stated herein. Provide guidance to the community economic development director and the implementation of all initiatives necessary to carry out the purpose of the council as stated herein. Chairman of the EDC, Economic Development Council provides the direct supervision for the community economic development director. The Pickens County Chamber of Commerce provides office space for the community economic development director and facilities for the council board meetings. Pickens County Government, city of Jasper, Pickens County Development Authority, and the Jasper Development Authority provide financial support for the council and activities of the community economic development director.
And that, what made you out of that paragraph think that the council had the power to hire, but how do we have the power to fire or dismiss the economic development director?
Can I ask a question with this?
If you give me one second, let me ask him that question.
This goes along with your question.
Alright, what is?
What is the duties of that council? Can I read their description?
I don't have that description with me.
They're right there, they just read the description of.
No, you're talking about the director that we've held. No, just, you're talking about the director that we've held.
Is y'all's one versus what's y'all's description?
I, I...
We hired the economic developer.
That's not accurate.
Who hired you?
Did I? It was the Chamber of Commerce directed by a group that was pulled together to assist in the hiring decision. The individuals on that group that assisted the Chamber of Commerce, there was a couple of members that carried forward to the Economic Development Council, but as I stated in, and what is on the creation date, these bylaws were created after I was hired. So the Economic Development Council did not exist during the hiring process. It was a citizens group that was pulled together through the chamber.
I was on the citizens group.
Yes, you were.
County commission was on the citizens group.
Yes, they were.
Mr. Dentson, were you on the citizens group that hired, or we came back through, were established?
Yeah, we're established.
Okay. All right. Now, how is it, Mr. Nekpatol, if you might, leaving John's question, how is it that you feel, how, how is it that we're supposed to replace you if we so choose? Who is your boss?
Okay. When you read the bylaws of the Economic Development Council, it clearly states, and the original form before was altered two years ago.
That, that paragraph was not altered?
Yet, the, that, that paragraph was altered.
How?
Because what was removed in the original version, which governed apparently this past meeting, because my understanding is, is that the revisions, uh, had not been scrutinized by, had not been subject to a resolution by the city or the county. But anyway, so the original version, it very, very clearly states that the Economic Development Council is a division of the Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce bylaws, it, it's clearly in there, John.
I don't feel like I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm there at Jasper.
If I made, the original resolution was made by the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, let me ask you this.
Supported by the, supported by the, um, city and the county.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
You attended the meeting where you asked this council, and I was there, to let Jerry Nekpatol not only to serve as the economic developer, but also take on the duties of the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I believe I was the only one that opposed that.
Well, actually, John, you verbally supported it and then abstained.
I did not verbally support it.
Sure you did.
I did not.
Sure you did.
I've got two witnesses right here.
We've got two witnesses too.
Did I support that, counsel?
You told me it was a very bad idea.
Bad idea and I told Jerry Nekpatol the very same thing to his face because here we set the day exactly what I said.
Well...
But that being said, what we need here tonight is if, are we going to continue to fund a Chamber of Commerce, this Jasper City Council with funding that we're talking about tonight, buying insurance, paying for, uh, paying for the facilities that the City of Jasper needs, or are we going to use taxpayers' dollars to fund the Chamber of Commerce director? And that's where we're at with this tonight. So this council needs to make that decision because obviously we can't fire Mr. Nekpatol because we don't have the power.
Well, that challenges that. We hired him. We, we...
We transferred him or allowed him.
The bylaws here are, are very specific and all authority, powers and duties, what is necessary, proper and convenient, to carry out the purpose stated herein. And the purpose stated herein, that would be a necessary part when we had our rules and, and, uh, measuring stick that was brought forward and gave to Jerry and Jerry had those directions. And then when it came back to gauge that were not completed, when we went back the second time this past year, we again gave those, gauged the job performance and, and he, as it says, if you're not satisfied with me, I'll step aside. And from that standpoint, that's, that's, uh, common sense.
Mike, if I could add something, um, yeah.
John?
My original question is, what is the duty of the members of the Economic Development Council? I would like to know what your duties are.
I'm a volunteer on that organization. I am a...
The duty is to do what is necessary.
Uh, to direct the, um...
That's correct. For your job, you gotta have powers.
But I don't have a job.
This is all your volunteer.
Again, going back directly, uh, to the, to the bylaws of the Economic Development Council as they were created on October 1st, 2008. And let me finish one other thing that I started to before I get back to addressing your point directly. Again, clearly states that it is a division of the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce. The Pickens County Chamber of Commerce clearly addresses the government, the governments of committees and divisions. And so it is very clear as to how these things legally all, uh, all fit. Now, going back to, John, your question, on section 103 purpose, okay, Mike is reading from section 104 powers. Section 103 purpose states there is a need for an Economic Development Council to take the responsibility to assist, okay? Says assist to Pickens County Development Authority, the City of Jasper Development Authority, the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce. Okay, so those entities are stated equally. And local government, governmental entities in seeking new industry and assisting existing industry to expand as well as improve the economic well-being of Pickens County through the attraction and expansion of business, commercial and industrial. So the purpose of that committee is very clear. It is, it is to assist these entities in the seeking of industry and expansions and other things. So I feel this is very clearly stated.
And do you feel like you've got assistance from it?
I think there are many constraints that our community has as well as this committee has. And I believe if there is a, um, opportunity to show the track record of the economic development efforts in total with an understanding of there are reasons why certain things don't happen, I think those people will be very, um, actually pleased with what they see because we do have a lot of constraints that we have to work through. Um, I do feel that we could take this opportunity to look at things and see if we can find a, um, one of the things that they talked about when we had our board retreat and we were learning lessons from Rome and how they made their advances. It was very clear that all these entities needed to be on the same page and to look forward in the same direction. And I think that the, well, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, in order, when you go to training, they talk about economic development being a community-wide effort. And the reason is you have to have a lot of elements in place to be successful. And that includes things like infrastructure and competitive locations and things such as that. And I do think we could probably do a better job in those areas. One of the things, and let me just interject, one of the items that we, that you discussed was coming together for economic development. A group of people got together and tried to help bring forth some economic development. And we've got a terrible track record. It's been, we've got no results.
We don't have a terrible...
You've been having those meetings, Mike. Have those meetings been open to the public and the press as required by an organization like this where...
What does an organization say?
More than 51%. Well, it's a council. It's an advisory council.
Advisory council subject, isn't it?
If they have 51% of the funds going to the, from, are coming from the government, they are. Especially if it's, well, it's the government fund. So 50, more than 51% of their funds are coming through the government.
We have a meeting each month. We have one.
Are they open?
I walk into them every time.
No, I'm talking about, have people been excluded who wanted to attend?
I've never excluded anyone from attending. Don't know anyone. Who would not have been able to attend, so.
Well, the press hasn't been notified. Um, there, there are other individuals and citizens, some of them here and some of them not, that have tried to attend and not been allowed to. So, but the, but the point is, if we need to make a decision on the funding from the city, then I think it's appropriate we do so. Moving forward, I think the, I think...
I have no, I have nothing to say about the funding of this.
I understand.
I understand why our commission was involved.
I think that the, the groups of, the groups that are at the table are the right groups. It's the development authorities, it's the city, the county and the Chamber of Commerce. I think those are the right groups. I think moving forward, we need to get in the same room, do, seek public opinion. Um, I've communicated this with Commissioner Jones. I would have communicated with John if I'd been included in the decision-making process. If you recall, when we were absent of Chamber Director, the chamber reached out to y'all and brought you all in a room and made the decisions together. We wanted it that way. Um, I don't think that that's...
I agree with that. I have no problem with that.
I know, I understand. I think the chamber has been excluded from this. I know it's complicated because of the dual role, but I think aside from that, we need to get in the room and work it out because the people at the table are the right people, are the right groups.
The question about the exclusion of the chamber, the executive director was at every meeting. I'm not sure how that would be exclusion of the chamber or something.
Well, he was not allowed to vote, um, um...
He was not a voting member.
Um, I think the president of the chamber is a voting member.
Can I, can I, uh, yes, please. Trying to, trying to sit back and listen and take all this in and see if the, what direction we're trying to go in. I want to ask a question and I, I want to be specific with it. And I want a specific answer and I don't want no beating around the bush. Did I, as a member of the city council of Jasper, hire the economic developer? No. I mean, no disrespect to Jerry at all, none. But I need to know, I'm speaking for myself, not for other council members here, because the city sends a pretty good portion of money to the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that money is dispersed in the right places it's supposed to go. I guess this goes back to, is Jerry the economic developer or is he not? Is that, is that position, is it vacant? Hooks and tell me that.
From my position, it is vacant. We, uh, as a council, we voted on it. Uh, it was unanimous, even though Commissioner Jones said he abstained from voting. If you take that one out, everybody else voted to dismiss Jerry. Only after Jerry offered us that, he said he would be glad to step aside if we weren't satisfied with him. We were not satisfied with him. A year prior to that, we give him the opportunity to draw up his own guidelines to go by. And when we asked for the report card this past January, it was dismal. We graded it, he failed. We voted, we dismissed him. And to Sonny's question, why didn't we ask to, uh, go, came up with the chamber to elect him as the executive director? Because what we've done now is he had, he'd had to fire himself.
Well, that was, that was where I was going with this question is because if this city council did, and, and, and once again, Jerry, nothing, I would be, I would ask this question if it was anybody else in this room sitting in your position. The, the question before this city council tonight is, if we didn't hire the economic developer, I'm not real sure what we're being asked up here tonight.
Well, us as members, if we're not qualified to, uh, you know, to hire and fire whoever we elect as that, in that position, what are we then?
And, and...
I mean, it's not run by...
And, and my next statement is, it's been quite obvious since January that people holding dual roles now is not, is not popular for this community. I'm not real sure this, I'm not real sure that it's a popular thing right now, that our council members is involved with the chamber because we're getting, getting kind of conflicts here. If this eight-person board was put in place to make sure that the economic developer is doing his job and we're, that's not our job, I think this council needs to listen to what's being brought before us here tonight.
And I don't think Jerry's trying to, uh, you know, defend his record. He's just trying to defend if we have the authority to dismiss him. Because if, as we look back at the record, I'm in full agreements with Mike. It's pitiful. And I've only been on it 44 years.
That's all I'm asking is before, before...
We have nothing to show for it.
I've got, I've got, I've got a feeling here, look while we're going to be asked to vote on, on the issue here and I want to be, I want, I want to have all the information for myself before we move forward.
Well, we want to move forward and we think we could do that better with a different director. And so we're going to have something to show for what you're spending your money on.
Okay.
And if we're given that opportunity, I think we could do just that.
Jerry, would you like to speak now?
Yeah, I mean, Tony, I'd like to address things to you, Director. I, I feel some of the things being presented are not entirely accurate. I welcome the opportunity to provide information about my track record, about what has happened here. Statements such as it's pitiful is not, that, that is not a quantitative statement with things behind it. If you look at expansions that have taken place in our community, if you look at industries that have come in, you look at things that have happened, again, within the parameters that we have, you know, a company that needs 30,000, um, patrons within a certain radius, you can try to sell them as hard as you can, but if you don't meet their profile, they're not going to come here. If you don't have a competitive location, I'm working with a company right now, they need 14,000 square feet with a 16-foot minimum ceiling and they need, they need it now. They can't wait to have it constructed. Uh, we've met with Jim and some others at a location that may work, but it's very difficult because it doesn't fit their criteria. And that's the challenge that we have. So I would certainly welcome the opportunity to go into detail about the track record, about what we've done. The other thing that I'll add is if you're going to say that this was a very defined, structured process, no one told me prior to 10 minutes before that meeting began that there was going to be any type of review or any type of actions. The, the county members of that board were not told in advance. I would think there would be a lot of process involved with the opportunity to provide information before that type of, uh, before that type of decision and that type of action was taken. Okay? So I do want to emphasize that. And I keep lots of records, I keep lots of information and I would be glad to share that detail with you. I'll be glad to share it in a town hall meeting. Okay? Because again, I think when you look at the actual facts, I think it paints a very different story than what's being presented. The other thing that I wanted to again emphasize, you're talking about, you know, I can't really hire, you know, fire myself and things like that. And, and let me touch on that. I mean, one of the reasons why I felt joining those two positions were the right thing to do is because when you look at economic development in total, not just industrial recruitment, but you look at everything that the state of Georgia deems as economic development, such as tourism, such as entertainment, such as workforce development, I think you will see that the chamber has been very involved in that and we continue to be more involved in the direction that I am putting forth for the chamber. Later today, you're going to be hearing from our tourism committee about a very aggressive schedule of events designed to help bring people into our community and keep them here as part, as one part of our economic development program. So again, there was, there was reasons why this appeared to be a good idea. Does it deserve review? I don't dispute that, Tony, and I'm willing to do that. What I do get upset about is that the way that these things were characterized, the way this process was handled. And that is why when you get right back to kind of the technicalities of the, uh, bylaws of this committee and the bylaws of the chamber, is because statements were made that this committee, you know, fired me and that this process had taken place and things such as that. And I do not feel that they were, uh, I don't feel it was fair and I don't feel it was entirely accurate. So all I'm saying at this point in time is, factually, I would like people to understand what the Economic Development Council is, how it relates to the Chamber of Commerce. At the end of the day, I'm a Chamber of Commerce employee and I always have been, although funding is provided for that program from both the city and the county, the majority of which is coming from the county. So again, I believe moving forward that because when you look at economic development in total, I believe the Chamber of Commerce is the right entity to bring that forward. I believe the Chamber of Commerce is the right entity to bring that forward. I want to again, point to the Marble Festival and you can see the difference in what that has been for years and what it was this year, when you put an economic focus on your activities, when you say, "How can we make a better impact to our citizens and our businesses?" I think that's the right direction that we need to head in. And I believe, again, it is the, the city and the county and the Chamber of Commerce that needs to sit down and really figure out what is the best path forward. And let's, let's get some of these other issues that we've been hung up on and that, yes, I've been pressing, you know, let's get that behind us. But let us move forward together. Let's not tear up a good thing that we have moving forward. And let's figure out how to fix this.
Tony, if I can address your, if you feel like there's a conflict and I resign from the Chamber of Commerce, we've taken it from a position where we met in 2016 and we were literally not going to be able, able to open the doors in three days. And now we have built the Chamber up to, despite what's been implied here, a very respectful organization. When Anne came on board, we specifically addressed the potential conflict and we were told there was none. And moving forward, what I would see this council doing as an advisory council would be if this decision was made, if we weren't going down the right path, that we established that we come back to the council and the commissioners advise us or whoever's involved at the time about what the procedures would be. And that way, we could possibly better verify that the person, not Jerry, any person, was treated with dignity and given the opportunity to do the things that anybody would be given. And I'm not talking about the second or third time, I'm talking about the first time.
I think that was, Sonny.
Okay.
Because like I said, he offered it to us, we accepted it. Now, we didn't cut his pay off that day. We asked to just cease his pay on February 16th, which was on into the next month. So we did not fire him on the spot, no pay, and if that's not dignified, what is?
Well, he wasn't given any other options initially to make up choices.
He offered it, Sonny. He said, "If y'all are not satisfied with the job I'm doing, I'll step up into the Chamber. I'll find somebody else to replace." How simple is that? Now, he says, you know, that the word I use, "pitiful," that's an easy word to understand. Everybody knows what that means. Our record is pitiful. Let's don't make any jokes about it. If we're going to move forward and do better for this community, we need a new leader. But to ask a question, is Jerry our director? No, he is not. From our position, as the eight members that sit around that table, no, he is not. And will he come back to be? No. He's businessless. Now, if y'all decide to vote for him, that's y'all's choice. We have no, no say-so in that.
I think it's an important organization.
Sir.
I think it's a very important organization.
It was started with a simple premise of, of, "Let's try to get some jobs in Pickens County. Let's try to keep these kids from leaving the high school 200 a year, going off and we're keeping 30, and most of those are in, in some type of business that might not be good for everybody."
Yes.
That was a-
No, go ahead.
That was, that was the reason that the council started. We determined that, that every, we were business people, uh, born and raised here. I, I, I love Pickens County, I love the city of Jasper. Why not work toward doing something like that? So that was our initial, we got fancy, we got determining whether or not, you know, this is economic development or that, it was about jobs. It started about jobs and we developed it. And, and, you know, Jerry's very eloquent, he can explain it a lot better than I can. But there was a, there was a, a simple matter of, the Chamber of Commerce has this position. This is their, what they do and we need to help in that direction. There was the Pickens County, there was the City of Jasper. The develop, the development, uh, brought in because we were kind of for, for money and things like that. So it was a very simple process of creating jobs. We didn't do it. We've all failed. You know, it didn't, it didn't work out. Jerry was given measuring, measuring guidelines and didn't measure up. So we decided going a different direction.
And I assisted how, I'm going to give it to you. John, don't try to speak, I want to recognize him to address this issue.
I'd like to see, I'd like to ask both of y'all, oh, you said, y'all been on here for a while.
I've been-
And in what, in your role, how have y'all assisted Jerry?
I've gone to Atlanta with him to talk with aircraft-related industries. I have met with him on a million occasions, trying to chase a water park round. I have, every time Jerry has asked me to, to meet with anybody, I actually didn't get involved in it. But when I had the opportunity to keep a business here, I went and met with some other business people and we got it together and, and they're probably a 40, 40 to 45 person employer now in Pickens County. What we're doing wasn't about systems, it wasn't, it was about creating jobs, keeping jobs here. We asked Jerry to create jobs, to find people to come here and do business. They have not done so, we graded him on that. We, people ask me our successes, we got very few.
So have y'all graded yourselves?
I don't get graded. I don't, I don't.
Is everybody a volunteer on that?
I'm getting, I'm getting zero. I get, I get paid nothing. I do this because I, because I want to help this community. We don't get any money.
Now, John, I'll, I'll ask you a question.
Okay, let me get a little word. Cope?
At each, at each meeting, he brings us up to date on, on business. And anything that he wants us to do, we're at his discretion. Most of the things that he would tell us about that he had in the pipeline, he couldn't discuss or he couldn't mention the names of. Never did he ask us to, you know, go with him and, and with these people or these places. Most of it's top secret. And so we didn't know until it was either a success or failure. Is that, is that true, John? I mean, you're a, you're a-
Well, I, we, we have economic development reports monthly and that quite often is the issue. We, you can't, and that's why we do meet privately, more often not, because we're dealing with people, hopefully dealing with people who want to invest money in Pickens County.
But we're always available to assist Jerry in anything he had in the pipeline.
I think if you ask him in five seconds, I'd love to hear his answer.
I don't think this is the-
Well, that was a question?
Well, I think it is.
Okay.
No, I'm just, I just would like to have a question. He asked me the question and I'd like to have Jerry.
If you, if you will, off time, you will direct your questions to me and then we're not going to start a fight here. I believe I can break that one up. Uh, but ask me and then we'll get that question to Jerry. Don't talk to-
I was asking a specific question.
Okay, what is it? What's your answer?
What did I do to help Jerry?
Right.
I would like for you to ask Jerry that question.
Jerry, would you explain?
I have asked Mike on several occasions for specific help on things. And very recently with the movie opportunity that's being filmed in town right now that I have worked on for several years to bring here and finally has come to fruition. I did turn to Mike for a specific issue and yes, he was very helpful. And he did exactly what I asked. Now, one of the things that I would like to go back to and touch on, again, this is where I'm saying, I would welcome the opportunity to provide information about our track record within the community because I do not agree with Mr. Cope's assessment because we have had industrial expansions at J.M. Huber, we've had expansions at QSR, we've had expansions at Royston. There's different ways that you support those. A lot of it depends on what the industry needs. But if you look at, for example, Bartow County, when you look at what they have done and they have very much a more developed industrial base and locations per industry, you know, these expansions are drivers and creators of jobs. And those jobs have been created. Mike's an example of the industry that was going bankrupt and individuals stepped in to help to save that company, is thriving today. Those are all examples. We have a plant up here on Hood Road, Stan Ridge Cover, has never let me make a public announcement. But you go up there now, they built a flame-friendly plant, they did an expansion. Again, when, when you, when you peel back the curb, I've sided at the, at the old shoe plant. That was something that we had looked at as a economic development authority. The pricing wasn't there, private entities came in. And there's four businesses in there today and, and another one being considered. So again, I believe when you look at the track record, I believe the track record is positive. But again, I'm saying, if we need to examine things, I am wide open to that. I just want it to be done in a, in a, with openness. I want it to be done fact-based. I want it to be done fairly. And again, I don't think coming to a Economic Development Council meeting with your county partner fully unaware of what was going to happen until they walked in that morning, your economic development director not knowing that that was going to take place. Also, this, this sheet that they keep referring to as something that was created as remedial action is actually a plan that I created about halfway through the year as a action plan to cover basically all our areas of economic development. And I'll be glad to share that with the City Council. I don't have a copy of that with me just yet. I was not prepared to go into that level of detail. But I would be glad to share with you everything that we have so that you can be fully informed and, and make your own determination. That's all I'm asking.
Any other questions, Council? Anne, Cope? Can you hit the nail on the head? This has been discussed by, I guess, pretty much everybody in this room. It's been in the paper for over a month. And this effort here tonight is a way to make the public aware of what's going on. I've heard someone say something about a tail wagging a dog once. And I think the Jasper City Council's options are very limited because we have, no one has authority to dismiss you except to the Chamber of Commerce Board. And we, our City of Jasper, spending money not only in hotel motel tax, sending it to the Chamber for their use, and, but we're specific in our $16,000 to economic development. And we thought, I thought, I always thought, since I'm on that board, that I was, had some authority as to the hiring and firing, I like to use the word dismissal more than firing, of, of the person who is responsible for economic development. I think that's what these two gentlemen have tried to convey this evening. And I think the people who is interested in the Chamber of Commerce, they need to be interested in the Chamber of Commerce. And we like to have a strong Chamber of Commerce. Any community needs a strong Chamber of Commerce. Also, it needs strong city government and it needs strong county government, strong school systems. And that's where my question is, and I beg to differ, that I was not in support of you taking that position because I think I was able to tell both these gentlemen and all the other guys that I told you so. And once we combine this position, we would not be able to separate it without having to be in front of God and everybody, a council meeting and a county commission meeting discussing this. So our only option tonight is, are we going to fund the Chamber of Commerce so that they fund their Executive Director or are we not? Because that's the job you have because you have no guidance now because you've lost confidence of, maybe lost confidence both, with the council. So what I'd ask tonight is, the council to make a motion to either continue to fund the Economic Development Council or stop funding the Economic Development Council's efforts for economic development since we, they don't have an economic development. Yes, yes, yes.
Well, he, well, he was, I think he had asked specifically what y'all's duties was.
Right.
Do y'all report to the council and to the county commission? Or you're all volunteers and you just?
We're all volunteers.
Okay. I've been there for us since '09, I guess.
Just, again, it just started out about stocks. It got fancy later and it was about trying to figure it out. Well, that's why, that's why I would try to sit back and listen and take all this in. And that's why I asked the question, do we have a current economic developer? If we do not, my suggestion would be is not to send our taxpayers' dollars to fund the position that is not filled. I mean, that's what we, that's what we are entrusted with is taxpayers' dollars, or my taxpayer's dollars. That's why I asked the specific question, if that position is filled. Because I feel like that's what this was coming to, is this council had to make a decision to vote on. I believe it's $16,000 for that position from taxpayers' dollars. And if that position is vacant, I don't see how this council can send that money to the Chamber of Commerce to be paid for that position. Can I get that in the form of a motion? If, 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 if the economic developer's position is vacant, I make a motion that we do not fund the Chamber of Commerce to be allocated in that position for the $16,000 that the city sends for that position.
Seconds. These seconds. Fails for lack of a second. And you're, you're pumped. Now, is anybody else going to motion? Well, I'll say this. The taxpayer of City of Jasper is presently funding the Chamber of Commerce. You gentlemen have no authority or power over that. But the county is supplying $56,000, Ms. Denny, and I want the public to know that. And if they want the City of Jasper to fund the Chamber of Commerce, it just did. Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Did I hear somebody pick off their teeth? Could I just make an, an observation or request?
I'd rather let this go, Max, but-
I don't know. Seeing that the community that we are, city and county, the people we have involved and business leaders from, again, city and county and county and city government, we have a Chamber of Commerce that is very active and very substantial that instead of us being on opposite ends and pointing fingers, maybe with leadership from the mayor and-
Hey, Tom.
Maybe with leadership from the mayor of the council and, uh, our county representatives, maybe we could encourage everybody to get to the same table, take the comprehensive plan that county does. And instead of this being this committee and that committee, that we come together as a group and work for the development of the community without pointing fingers and, and just, we've got all the air out now. It's on the table, so invite everybody to come together and let's see where we go from here.
Well, Max, that is a great suggestion. But I feel like we deeply need to separate the Chamber of Commerce, which represents the business end of our community, and the council, which represents the government and everyone, including the little person that lives over on Potty Ridge or the person that lives anywhere in Jasper. And we got our duties and responsibilities. And once we start intermingling our funds, is all I'm trying to get out in the open so that everyone knows without any innuendo and make sure everybody, the sun is shining on everything and if it's not shining tonight, I don't know what is.
It's good. All I'm trying to say, everybody has their own roles to play. But let's figure some way that we can all come together, sit around the table and say, "Where are we and where do we need to go and how can we get there?" As a community that wants the best for-
I think establishing, I think establishing guidelines pretty quick because-
John, let me say something. We, we started out that council as a, as a situation to support the Chamber of Commerce. We'd started out to, to, there was no us against them and it never was up until the situation was determined to go a different direction.
Well, that's not true. You took, you took the power from, you, you took Jerry's reporting structure away before, before Denise even left. Yeah. Yeah, you did it in March, you didn't leave till May. So there was, there was-
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
Initially, the economic development director reported to the executive of the Chamber. That was taken away when the bylaws were attempted to be changed.
When he became the chairman of the, well, that was issued lightly. Let me, let me summarize this to the end. Let me, let me bring this, let me bring this to an end by simply saying, this will need to probably be adjudicated, Mr. Pickett, in order to move forward- Since I can't get a second from the city council to move forward with an independent government, I'm going to ask Mr. Pickett to look at the legal process of funding the Chamber of Commerce. So with that, we're moving forward, guys. Chamber events, who is coming up next? Amy, who is here? Jackie, y'all been here, Carrie? Come on down.
No, not me.
We don't have to pull it up. I've got, I know.
We met with the Chamber Campfire Workshop the other evening and made a presentation. So I guess this is the official version. We appreciate you guys being here.
Well, this is just a shortened version. We didn't show like we should.
Yeah, if you do as long as you did the workshop, we'll fall out to dismiss or have a presentation.
No, we're going to have to. So, basically, yeah. So, we are the chair and co-chair for the Tourism Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And we've been working on some events for the entire year, mapping those out as we presented the other night. But we have one big event that will go, that we want to start in May and end in October. And that event, as you have in front of you, is the Saturday Social in the Mountains. So every first Saturday, May through October, we want to have this event in downtown Jasper from 5:00 PM to 8, oh, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, featuring some DJs, bands, classic cars and Jeep crews and a different theme each month. And I've listed out those themes each month that we want to go with. And like presented the other night, basically what we're asking for from the city council is basically permission to close the streets off. And we do want to close North and South Main. We know we cannot close 53, but we want to close both sides of the town to make it equal. And have food options at both ends. And as we asked the other night, we were asking for like what type of permits were needed for the event and the vendors that we wanted to bring in. And then how many officers and far would be required for the event? And the other thing we would need from the city is help on the city stage as far as if we have a van and that type of thing. And what would be required? We know we got to clean up the streets afterwards.
Mr. O'Leary, would you step out and get our chief of police back in immediately? I was going to direct that question to the chief of police, but he was outside having a conversation. Real, I hate to go, hate to revisit anything, but would you explain one more time about needing police help with your projects and for the council?
So what we're looking at is street closure, North and South Main, because we hope to have events in any place from both the north side and the south side. The permits that would be required for vendors or events, such as if any of them offer alcohol for sale and that type of thing. And then how many officers or far would be required for the event and like the time spots? And...
What would be your timeframe on these?
The event, we hope to...
From 5:00 to 10:00?
5:00 to 10:00. So obviously you got to close your street in advance to get everyone off the...
Chief, the question is to block North Main Street and South Main Street in the central business district. Just, just in the middle. What would that entail and how much would that cost as far as extra patrol?
You talking about leaving 53 open and closing both North and South Main?
Yes, yes.
That is a pretty big operation right there.
Okay. Why, why?
Well, you're going to need police officers. Y'all ever been to the Jeep Fest? I know people have. There's abundance of pedestrian traffic. We have to get pedestrians safely across, just like we do at Halloween. And that's always...
Well, Halloween is pretty much example of what this is going to be like, wouldn't you think?
Exactly.
From 61 Main Street, pretty much?
Yes.
Yes.
So if you, if you were coming from South Main Street trying to go to the jump, jumping castle or whatever, how would you get there?
You could go be a... You go back Polly Street, come up Richards and cross there and go behind Jasper Drugs and continue out North Main Street.
Go to the three-way stop after you pass the bank. You could come back both there.
South Richards Street, that's where we, you know, where all the...
I would take Potty Ridge. Okay, with that being said, and we appreciate your efforts, the council now has a decision to make. Are they going to approve your events? Knowing that there's going to be issues, there's going to be expenses from the chamber. Now, this is chamber and we talked about the Dr. Merchant Association. Did y'all meet with the merchants?
We have asked them to counterdate it, no.
Okay. So with that, the council has tonight to approve this schedule of events, knowing that there will be some traffic issues, inconvenience. But I think possibly we've had inconvenience before. But everyone needs to be aware.
And this would be a tourism committee event. So it would be a sponsor-related event from May through August. September is the weekend of Jeep Fest. So we're already kind of doing that a little bit in Jasper. And actually, that location might have to change for that Saturday night. And then October is Marble Festival, which was done last year. It just wasn't, it closed off to the extent. So you're already closing the streets for Marble Festival.
And the Jeep.
Right, so really we're asking for something different from May through August, hopefully.
How about, how about North Main and DB Carroll? Is that, is that what it is? Do, what's the...
No, it's...
If we did that, would that be easier?
Yeah, so when you, when you block off both ends of Main Street, that's a, you know, that's a very...
Don't you mess your plan enough?
Well, but the problem is, is your businesses on South Main do not like to be left out of the events because yours, then you're putting all the businesses on North Main to an advantage of the businesses on South Main.
Understood.
But I mean, we'll do whatever it takes to have an event. We want to draw people into town. I mean, the main focus here is, I mean, the argument just before us was nothing's happening, nothing's evolving. We want to get something started. We want to have something. We want people to come to Jasper.
And Carrie, you could flip-block to know the north is not south, that's not...
There's none down and north south.
There's not north south. And then most of your restaurants, because we, we haven't had detailed conversations with 60 women, but they're not usually open on a Saturday night. So depending on whether or not they revise their schedule and open, I mean, you would have to put like a food truck or something out there because all your restaurants would be on the north side and people would be crossing anyway.
Counsel, you have before you a Saturday Social in the Mountains calendar.
Where would you put, uh...
How many more weeds we going to cut?
With weeds one more?
Well, not a lot, no, not.
Well, Anne's got the floor. Anne's got the floor.
Well, my question was where, I just want to make sure that we don't run into the same problem with the county that we ran into before about where we're putting these things on, as far as vendors go.
Don't need to get on courthouse lawn. You might get robbed.
Right.
But if the streets are closed off, they could actually be in the...
In the street, in the center. Well, the cars would be in the park, but not the center of these streets.
What's the slip and slide?
Well, that's just an example.
They're actually companies that go, if you, if you Google it, where they, they do the slip and slide and they, companies...
Man, I don't own a cell phone.
They make, they make Main Street or a designated street a huge slip and slide.
You talking about something with water and...
Yes, sir.
So you want to expose the city to the liability if somebody gets hurt by having a slip and slide out in the middle of the street?
It's just like a bounce house. Anybody that jumps in a bounce house has to sign something before they go in. I mean, you could make it get in a bounce house and fall and break their arm.
They're actually companies that, that do come in and set those up and they have all the...
And that was, I mean, they are not set on, this is an example. Like August is an event for the kids because it's back to school.
These are just ideas, not, you know...
Just a weed, right?
We, we did require additional insurance at the end of the year when we allowed JMA to do it. So...
Yeah, I never saw it. I just read it. I didn't know about it.
But I mean, I think we would do the same thing here if, if we allowed to do something that would have to... What was, because then you recommend...
I didn't know what a slip and slide was.
Yeah.
She had cell phones.
Okay, counsel. Entertained a motion?
Hey, sir.
Yes. Is that a motion?
I was discussing this with, I knew it was coming up with a young woman. Is this going to be done with off, on duty or off-duty first of all?
Question.
That will have to be discussed in some, we haven't had any meetings. Our main thing is if we're even going to be allowed to have it. We haven't went out and had a meeting with the, the police department or anybody there as far as... But I would assume the city is not going to fund their officers. I mean, that's something that you guys will have to tell us, but...
I think we set the precedence when we did the New Year's Eve thing that they're going to be required to do off-duty officers and get with you, get with the sheriff's department.
We just recently I met with Dale Masri of the Landmark College, having that thing. And she's, at Morrissey. She's got four off-duty officers at $35 an hour handling that detail.
I would like to see them do off-duty officers for the simple reason that I think that's where we're going. The more things we do, then maybe we can find the balance with that.
And when is the car shows? Do they not do those on Saturdays as well?
It's the fourth Saturday.
Fourth Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, counsel. You have before you an itinerary of social events to be held on Main Street, North and South in the central business district. Would entertain a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we have the street closure, that they provide their own policemen. But I would also like to discuss the permits that they're going to need.
Okay, and maybe the insurance if they get the slip and sliding, just in case. All that can be worked out for hurry being, I believe.
Okay.
Has a motion? I need a second.
Sir.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion, any further discussion now that we've discussed it?
So they would just talk to Jill about the stage and then with the officers about how many there's more?
As we always have, yes.
I may have instructed I have a potential conflict, so I have to rescind my second.
Okay, well, if you have one, the other one does too. I'll make a motion. Okay, this is going to be a chamber event. I just got a motion from a chamber member, board member and the chamber president. So let's, let's ask the other people to move forward with this.
Wait, can I, not, not to ask. I mean, it is a chamber event, but for clarification, it's through tourism, which is hotel motel tax. So I don't know, I mean, Jerry, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I mean...
Because it's only, you have to get a sponsor for these events.
I mean, just, just a point of clarification that came up. I mean, as the destination marketing organization for the community, you know, these funds come in to promote things and to bring people into the community. So this is a, this is a chamber-sponsored event. There, just like the Fourth of, or New Year's Eve party, there's different ways that you can promote things. Sometimes you're using chamber funds. But yes, it is a chamber-sponsored event. It is to provide something fun for residents as well as keeping them here to spend money and bringing people into the community.
I've got two more, council members. We might be able to solve this without you. Entertained a motion?
I make the motion that we work to do the Saturday socials, take a hint by ending, follow those guidelines that we did for the New Year's Eve party.
Second.
New Year's Eve party did not have the Southside block. Well, no, we'll work, let the chief work that out.
I got a motion, second. Discussion. Being on offer with your hands, that's two foreign, two abstained. Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation. Did not, not mean to throw y'all under the bus. Hey, there's still some good stuff left, guys. The coal well emergency generator, Mr. Hall.
The coal well repair, the fuel generator is to replace the generator, the generator that city got originally on the ground. Over there is a propane generator and it will not handle both wells at one time. So to replace this, we need to move forward and get a diesel generator. Myself, Jim and Lisa. Thank you. You met with us today, too, Craig and Vaughn, everything. And the offer of that generator, who is the original figure, who put the propane generator over there, they have suggested that they will switch out the propane generators with a diesel generator that will do the job that we need to run both wells. And the extra cost to switch this is $14,790.
Okay, so they're going to take back the generator, the generator that's propane. And $14,000 will be the separation. Are we going to get funded from the feds on this leasing?
We are working on it. Like just last week, I received an email from Kelly Brockenberg to, for some forms to fill out. We're going to try to get the funding, but it won't be 100%. More like a... Eighty-five.
Okay, and we have some propane tanks now available for sale. Anybody give us the price on those?
No, we have contacted, Wendy has contacted the Weekly.
Weekly propane?
And they have a couple of people that are interested in purchasing those tanks. Haven't really gotten any call from them until we're for sure and they're quite healthy to go.
Just, just for the information and record for everyone is that this propane generators, when they fired off, it sounded like a car wreck. And they just backed, dragged, finally just disintegrated.
They done some adjustments trying to make it work and by doing so, they ruined it.
And we were thinking there was going to be the trick because it's the cleanest way we could keep the environment around the wellhead. But we got to have a generator and we have to figure a way to secure the diesel. But with that, we got to have power for that because during the storm last fall, that generator, the diesel that we carried up there saved the day and we were able to keep water to the city of Jasper during the storm event that took out Cove Road for a couple of three days.
It is the backup.
It is the backup. So $14,000 we want to get approved tonight. We might find some money from the state, federal. If we don't, we got to do it anyway. And if we, we might be able to sell the propane tanks. We already paid for them, correct? And so there might be some funding there, but we need $14,000 tonight so we can move forward because we're running out of time with the feds.
Also, that's an extension, but I'm not sure we're going to get that either.
Okay.
Where would we pull, do you know where we'd get one from?
$14,000?
Yeah, I think we have a couple of water runs that we can delay until next year that are on our...
We definitely, we definitely, Mr. O'Leary, question?
Spoke with Vaughn about that this morning briefly. Need to make sure everybody understands you are working in an extension with the federal government now with no guarantee of a second one being approved.
That's correct.
So it's coming out of your budget, right?
Exactly.
$14,000, can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we spend $14,000 to swap the generator out.
Got a motion? Motion's second, is that a second?
$14,000, so...
$14,790.
Oh, we have a 15 if you need to. Got a motion, second. Discussion. Being on offer with your hands. Thank you, council, that's your name, it's David. Look forward to that. I beg your, uh, still got you. Pump repair, what we talking about, David?
Uh, the pump repair is a 30 horse powered flat pump that... Uh, pump repair is a, uh, thirty horse, uh, powered flat pump that is across the road. Begin from Josh Tractor, um, that needs repaired, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars for a rebuild. And new pump's gonna be about twenty-five thousand, so I suggest that we go, um, with the rebuild on the thirty horse power.
You have spare in there, I mean, the other one pumped while this one's gone?
Yeah, there's two, but if the other one would go out, yeah.
I'm one of you Jim's lot. What about the possibility of twenty-five thousand buying the other one to back this one? Do we have one to back this one up?
Yeah, we already have one.
We have, we have this spare already, okay. Would entertain a motion, you wanna rebuild it, correct?
Yes.
Would entertain a motion to rebuild the pump, known as pump number four, uh, cost from Shadow Church.
Yes.
Do we have anything in the budget for that?
Yes, yes, it's, it's.
It was, but this was budget.
I make a motion that we repair the pump across from Josh Tractor for eleven thousand nine hundred dollars.
Is second. Motion second, discussion. Being none off air, vote with your hands. Thank you council. Water tank inspection results. Tank cleaned out, Dave Hall.
Yeah, on the, uh, tank repair list that we've got, it's a very extensive list, uh, that me and Jim have discussed and the mayor, uh, that the main thing to do right now. And Lisa's been involved with financial part of it. We've got one of them cleaned out and we would like to have, uh, the tank that Lily Circle, two hundred and fifty thousand. About that tank and each.
Say two hundred and fifty thousand gallon, you might be confused with the mine.
Two hundred and fifty, uh, thousand gallons and it was thirty-eight hundred, correct Lisa?
I don't have the paperwork.
Okay, it was thirty-eight hundred, uh, dollars to, uh, clean it out. It's gonna be virtually the same for the other three, which is the forestry tank, uh, the north tank and industrial, on Industrial Boulevard. And the Woodbridge tank. Each one's gonna be, uh, approximately, uh, thirty, pretty sure it's thirty-eight hundred dollars per tank.
How many tanks do we have?
I think we have ten altogether, you know, but these are the ones that are the oldest that need attention right now. And we'll be coming back to you, you know, in a couple of years probably with some painting.
Just did some last year though, right, three or four of them or something?
We done, uh, we done a repair on one of the tanks last year.
God, okay.
The painting of one of those elevated tanks, such as the one on Lily Circle, is around ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And we've got four of those elevated, we got five of those elevated tanks.
Yeah, and the state coming down our state survey, they told us to, uh, you know, get some attention to all of our tanks and get a plan made up in our plant. Right now, so all of them cleaned out, get all of the signage up and then come back to you all next year on a plan on painting each individual tank. So right now, what we're asking for, uh, is the okay to go ahead and clean the other three tanks, uh, which is on the budget, correct Lisa?
Yeah.
Did you, did you have to drop that tank all the way down?
No, they have them, but they sterilize a mechanical, uh, like the little dozer that you're named, it's got a vacuum on it. Looks like a little kid's story. They sit in the truck and do it by video. And they vacuums it out and puts it over the top of the tank. And they do each individual one that way. They never got, never got out of the truck. Once he took it up there and put the, uh, truck and the video camera in there and the little vacuum system, he never got, he sat in the truck. Then they were good.
For three, am I correct?
Three, three tanks at thirty-five, thirty-one hundred. I think the Woodbridge is a little bit, uh, cheaper being so small. Uh, I wanna say it's thirty-five and the others, uh, and this is on the budget for these to be cleaned out.
Woodbridge, North Tank and, uh.
Forestry. Lily, Lily Circle has already been done.
Okay.
Entertained a motion?
I make a motion that we approve to do, clean out these three tanks at up to thirty-eight hundred dollars, it's in the budget. Each, yes.
Second, so the motion is second, discussion. Being none off air, vote with your hands. Thank you council. Water loss detection project, David?
We, uh, we have been turned down on our permit increase, uh, for the water treatment plant from two million to two point four million. And one of the suggestions that they had was for us to go and have leak detection done on our entire system. And me and Jim have went in and got, uh, bids from, uh, two companies, uh, Watts Water and Matchpoint. And the cheapest of the two, and that's the entire system. I mean, they're gonna come in, they'll do a hundred and eighty-three miles, uh, Tony has estimated with the vice, y'all bought him. And, uh, hundred and eighty-three miles of detection. This is majors, hydrates, everything, the whole system. And we got bids, uh, from two companies that turn city engineers had, uh, give us recommendations on that they had done, other counties and cities around here. And one come in at fifty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, that's Watts, W A C H S, I guess I'm saying that right. Uh, come in at fifty-four thousand dollars and then Matchpoint come in at forty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the budget committee has already looked at this and had put it on.
I make sure we approve it.
Hundred thousand.
Okay. Now, did you have a chance to talk to Mr. Turnip Seed or anyone else about these guys?
And they said both of them, uh, come highly recommended they would, you know, everybody was low B, they would, you know, would be fine with.
Okay, council, we approve this during the budget effort and would entertain a motion to approve, especially since it's about a fifty-five thousand dollar savings at the present. We might need that money later. Motion approved. And he, he, he talked to you about if we don't get this and we don't save this, what we're losing about thirty, thirty-five percent, uh, no going higher. Uh, that we will, one of these days we're gonna have to say no to any growth that's coming at us because this, this is our savings. And once we do this, we'll have a better opportunity to get increases from other sources. Without this, we can't have it.
Yeah, they're gonna do everything, they're gonna come in and they're gonna go, and you'll see them by your house, by your neighbor's house. Uh, they, they want to find leaks and whenever they find them, once the leak is fixed, they'll come back and make sure that the leak is fixed and let this go on.
And they have, they have means that we don't. I mean, they actually found a leak for us once in front of tractor supply that we had looked over the whole fifty-three area trying to find this leak. And it was between the sidewalk and the curb and it was going down underneath and we would have never found it. But he found it within thirty minutes after he got here. They will find leaks and the, and you may not believe this, but some people tap into our system illegally. And this will, you'll find some things that you'll be surprised of. If anybody's out there who's doing it illegally, please cease and desist.
Hundred and eighty-three miles, they're gonna have to go over each individual connection and everything and oh yeah, they'll, they'll find a lot.
Entertained a motion to, entertained a motion?
I make a motion that we take the lowest bid at, uh, Matchpoint, forty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven for, to, for the water.
Okay. Motion to prove Matchpoint.
Loss detection.
Second, motion second, discussion. Being none off air, vote with your hands. Thank you council, that's what we're doing now.
What are the budget?
Yeah, we, we probably would need more of a porto.
Maybe come back and one look at Miggy's later on.
Lots of different things to get, to get this lost to where it needs to be. Uh, item H, uh, Mr. Walker's not here, Sunro, is that you? Planning mission report?
Council, Mr. Mayor, uh, on February the twenty-sixth, the planning commission met and voted to recommend to the council that they approve the, uh, annexation of two point six nine acres of Mr. Johnny Greenway's over behind Roland Tire. And, uh, so that's what you're.
And to build, to build storage buildings?
Yes.
No residential whatsoever?
No.
Well, entertain a motion?
Is the zoning changing or what, what?
It's being annexed, it's being annexed as C two?
C two.
Entertained a motion?
What is it now?
Mr. County, uh.
Highway business.
Mr. County highway business, it's really not changing.
Just said, nothing there, but you're talking about zoning or?
The zoning is county, county got county business, what, what do they call it?
Highway business.
Highway business. Our equivalent to C two. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to, that is described property.
A motion to approve the annexation of the two point six nine acres?
Yes.
Okay, located on Old Field.
On fifty-six, Old Field, that's the road.
Got a motion? Got a motion second, discussion. Being none off air, vote with your hands. Thank you council. Rate increase for employees, Mr. Looney?
With the, uh, decision on, uh, insurance, uh, I request that, that council see the way, uh, make a motion to give the three percent salary increase that was budgeted to employees pro-radiant, pro-radiant, uh, at the full three percent be paid out over the next, uh, ten months or whenever we can.
So you're going to backdate that for the first year since we've been successful on the, uh?
I think it's matter of making a three point something, so it is the full three percent that they would get.
I make a motion that we give employees a three percent for the year rates. You know, two, two months, two and a half months.
Yeah.
It's, so it'd be three point one six, I believe.
Next, oh wait, next you lose that one point six.
Yeah.
You might remember that stuff. I got a motion?
Second.
Motion? You motion, Jim? Motion is second, discussion. Being none off air, vote with your hands. Thank you, Jim.
Uh, report, repair on storm, uh, water structures at the, um.
Used to get one.
I call it beverage ordinance amendment?
And I'm looking at a.
Old agenda.
Old agenda. Uh, alcohol beverage amendment, uh, we have asked, uh, legal counsel to look at it. Ordinance that he's, uh, researching and will be preparing to allow breweries, uh, into our, uh, C two, uh, designation. We probably will also look at libraries and possibly distilleries on the same, uh, thing.
Okay, so ordinance.
No action, that's not a action necessary, legal counsel's looking at it.
Okay.
Jim, is he looking at what the, uh, chamber was asking about with their trucks to the legalities of what we talked about with him? That our ordinance fits what they're asking us to do in, in bringing in their beer trucks and that kind of stuff?
Well, no, I think that's, that would be in our current ordinance, wouldn't it? Bill? If a beer truck came in and, uh, served beer, they would have to have catering license. And.
That's what we're studying.
That's state catering license, I think there is a city catering, uh, kind of.
I meant, lady, she's Barbara Redd.
Repair was a count occasion. Uh, repair on storm water structures. At our meeting the other night, we discussed, uh, three areas that are either on property or very near personal property. Uh, where in the past the city has made improvements to the, uh, storm water structures. There is a need to go back in there and do some further work on those areas. And I'm requesting an estimated twenty thousand dollars to do the work at the suggestion of legal counsel. We need to also be looking at the possibility of having engineers look at this before we do the repairs and get, uh, uh, a, uh, an opinion on, uh, on how to, uh, the new structures. So, uh, probably looking at, uh, doubling that price with engineers involved.
Have you considered, uh, contracting?
Have not, uh, we can look at that if, uh, council sort of desires. Again, that's, uh, that would be more money we would be using other than, people other than our own employees.
So you're saying with the engineer, it could be up to forty-five?
That's my estimate right now. Until, until I got an idea from the engineers, uh, I can't give a very firm price.
You're probably gonna double the price for that area. I would recommend digging it out, replacing it. Cause it is what it is and it's under engineered, uh, because there's a smaller line coming under fifty-three. Uh, replace it with a like size, move forward, save you money. Would be my recommendation, but you can spend the money if you want.
Probably get, probably, probably buy it online.
It's not, it's not in our budget, we'd have to pull something, we'd have to cancel something, uh, move this forward this.
These are, these are water problem issues that have to be addressed sometime.
We can table this until next month, give the council a real chance to look at it and come up with that, just a thought.
And it, if that's a possibility, we are getting into the storm season, so there is some risk with that.
And dealing, and dealing with the roads, we could use some splash money. If we, if, under the roads specifically, without them, that it would be.
That would take care of some.
Things temporized, temporized now, I know there were some citizens that were reaching out to you, but we, we kinda got things at least where they.
No, no, all we have to do is look at them and, and clean, uh, structures to keep, uh, water from coming around the sides. You got something to say?
Could we use some of the money that we had budgeted back on this project that we're saving? That we're only using fifty thousand on, could we use some of that?
Water.
For fear of turning around and seeing David's.
David's face, I know.
I would suggest we save that as a budget right now.
We may need to look at water meters.
But storm water does fall under, uh.
I'm not gonna look at it, you all look at it all you want.
He's got some.
He's raising his hand.
Well, the, the Little Street is, is dangerous for that road and.
And sewer line.
Sewer line.
Jim, in the meantime, if we table for next month, when you try to figure out where we're gonna pull this money from? If you see areas that we could cut and could you itemize those out for us to hold?
Sure.
Not what we're, what we're neglecting to put this on.
I can, I can look at the budget and, uh.
Can you?
Try to find you some money.
Can you also find out what engineering would cost us? I, I think the concern is, you're saying that it's all the last, it makes it all the time. I don't know that it would last any longer with engineer, but I'm just asking.
And if I, I'm gonna try to research the local engineers to look at it today. Uh, we may decide to go, but, uh, I've been turnip seed, uh, the, uh, smaller engineering groups closer to town, maybe more of, uh, with that.
Oh, you can add that.
I don't take that any day thing. Yeah. Appleton Trail project.
Uh, we have had Appleton Trail project, uh, uh, sitting, uh, with no work for a number of months now. Um, I think the original, um, intent was to close that in with, uh, sidewalk and lights. Would like to include that on one of our paving projects with the splash money. I think we do have it on this year's, Lonnie?
Yes.
Uh, or this, not this year's, but this next, uh, contract. I didn't know what's council's wishes on how to finish, uh, that area. Are we interested in sidewalks, lights, we can put a road in right now?
We have the money to put the road in, correct, based on.
That would be splash money, that would be splash.
We've got a lot of already sidewalks that, that need repaid, that I would like to look at, that people keep asking us about before we do moves.
If we're gonna develop something there, I'd like to see something, at least a schematic or a drawing, a conceptual drawing of what the plan is. I'd like to see a budget.
There, there's nothing on, on that that.
There, there's nothing on, on that that I know of.
I know there are private lands that are involved, adjacent to it, and maybe in the center, but those are just things that. There are, there are a lot of public comments about sidewalks. I don't necessarily think they mean a, around a track. I think it would have some benefit, but I don't know where the other sidewalks. Thankfully, shortly after we moved here, we, I got sidewalks. So I would suggest that sidewalks could be added to the road later on, sidewalks and lights. I would ask that we look at the possibility of putting a rail up on part of that extension, a guardrail.
Yeah, I agree.
You might talk a little bit about the meeting this morning, about DOT talking about the DC lane.
Oh, I, I've gotten that meeting late.
Okay, DOT, and we would pull the DC lane off of the 53, that's going to dump a lot of traffic into that area potentially. But, just a thought, a lot of traffic could be steering in that direction versus trying to get another traffic lap at the same time. But.
I'd like to make a motion, let's table it till we have a plan, so we know exactly what we need to do. Do you want to take that off, uh, paving?
Let, let's leave it there till we figure out what we can do.
Okay. Because if that one won't be advertised before you meet again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to leave that on there.
Leave the paving on there and.
We, we were discussing, it's, it's going, it's going to take, it's going to take piping, it's going to take curtain guttering, it's going to have some flooding issues, the way the road's set up. We act, we actually got a bid, which I thought was a little bit out of hand, because we're the contractor coming to do all the work, about $200,000, $200,000. To, that, that brings all the flood, uh, storm water, storm rain, pipe, curtain guttering, sidewalks, everything in place, of course, that could be reduced down. And we could just pave it, but once you pave it, it's hard to come back in and curb gutter it. And tie it into your storm water. So, that's the thought is too, we'll talk back tomorrow if you want.
We'll table that one. Okay.
Item him?
Sick leave policy. I've been asked by council to look at the sick leave policy, I made a recommendation on my update, that we change that from an employee needing to see the doctor on every absence, or leaving full day absence, to a policy more in the line of if you're gone three days, you would, unemployed, need a doctor's excuse. And in situations where an employee is showing in a quarter more than three shifts out for doctor's excuse, that they would be required to, be in a doctor's excuse for any additional days off.
I make a motion that we don't require them to have one just for one day, that we do allow them to have a doctor's excuse. Are we going to say the third day, or if they're out three days?
If they're out three days during a quarter.
Or if they're three days consecutive.
Or three days consecutive.
Okay.
Motion? Is that a motion?
Yes.
And a motion, explain that motion again for the record, please.
I make a motion that if they're out consecutive days, they have to have a doctor's note.
Three consecutive days.
Or three days in a quarter.
Okay, do you know how many days a, a, an employee gets per year? And how they acquire sick leave?
How they acquire?
Yeah.
Per paycheck?
I don't know, do you know? Do you know, Jim? Just a question, I'm not.
No, no, I, I.
I think you need to look into this, how, how many days you build, because what you're doing is offering a vacation day. Because without requirements, all I can do is go and tell you I'm sick, I get to stay out, you pay me, and you got to still repair those leaks, you got to do the things that needs to be done. But you need to understand how much vacation and how much sick time the city already supplies its employees. Be something to look at before, and I meant to talk to you about this before now, and I didn't mean to throw you on a bus on that. But, uh, look at that and, and see, because once you give it, you ever take it away from an employee, you'll have to pay. But, uh, I remember when I had to go to sick leave, bring me an excuse so I could have employees working Thursday and Friday. Just, just.
Jim, would it be, would it be worth setting her on the personnel policy to meet with you?
True.
And.
We can do that, and I will look at how the sick leave deserves and what the maximum is on a hearing form. The area is going to make these.
Well, we did talk about.
Conflicts there.
Now, now, what's this, now, all employees, I didn't really start this.
They're your under the house, not us.
I think, I think it's fairly standard that three days is what, that's pretty standard. I think it does put some responsibility on the employee's, um, director or manager, whatever our job description would imply, is there, want to change the command? So I think that's fairly standard.
Fair enough.
But I'm glad to look at it. I think there's a motion on board, I believe.
I did, but I mean, I'd be glad to look at it as, as being on the personnel committee, if we think we need to do something different.
So can I get you with your, your motion?
Do we send that?
I will set that up.
Thank you, and I don't mind the employee getting that benefit, but I'm not going to overtax our payroll either.
Uh, next one is GPS software. A fast look at GPS software, we are currently paying $2,592, I believe it is, per month for 73 units. There is a need to possibly get as many as 20 more vehicles and equipment, which would be, would be $35 each.
Did you try to negotiate that with them, since we got so many?
No, no, I, but depending on, depending on the vote of council, we can, uh, we can look at renegotiating the contract, voiding the contract, or.
Either or.
Either or. Jim, do they have the, like, so they're in an emergency situation, is there a button they can pull? No, but that's something that may be, uh, considered in negotiations, a panic button. Could be added, my guess is it would be an additional cost.
And that, if this is something we can also really discuss during the workshop too, and there's no rush, because we got to get a contract, I think, for a while.
We have a contract that automatically renews every January.
Could you look at the contract and, and see where, if we were to be penalized to cancel the contract?
There's no penalty mentioned in there, we're in the fourth year. I'm sure that would have to be negotiated. Didn't we talk about this at the board session?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we did.
Yep. We had the numbers, though.
No, all, the only numbers we had were the $35 and 10 cents per unit, and understanding there was a need that we continue with this to add possibly another 20.
I make a motion that we remove them, and I'd like to see what we can do to save that $2,500 right now, to put towards, it looks like we're going to need it toward water.
Got a motion to remove the GPS? Second, got a motion in the second, any discussion?
That one, it's just, the only thing I have, and that, I was really not cool with this to start with, because it's been brought up while working, I'm not really, I don't feel that, and monitor where I'm at all the time, that may not be the case here, I don't think it is, but after we had the physical equipment stole, and then you get to looking at it as a, maybe an insurance policy for that happening in the future, so, I kind of got mixed emotions on the issue of. So I don't know.
Are we getting a discount on our insurance report?
I think you can pursue it, I think as Joe talked about it, we never actually got there with it. But I'm going to throw this in.
Never council ever, ever.
I, I'm going to throw this in for you, is that when we did this, it was to protect the employees, they didn't believe it, but I've had so many people calling complaining about speeding employees, this, that, and the other. With this GPS, you can go on, tell them exactly how fast they were going, and where they were, and I spent a half a day chasing down an employee once, it turned out to be a county employee. And I was able to prove that later, when I was able to, and several times I've been able to tell people now that was not a city employee. And yes, that was a city employee, and he needs to slow down. So, but it's, it's only as good as you make it, but it's a heck of a tool, and it, you can, you can run the city nearly seventy cheetahs. And you, you know where your heavy equipment is, and we just purchased over nearly three-quarter million dollars' worth of equipment. Now we're not going to put any, make checks on them.
We have any on those?
It's, well, he's talking.
That's smart, of what we'd have to buy additional units for.
Got a motion in the second, any further discussion? Ben and I'll have everybody show hands. That's three, four, all opposed, one against.
I will negotiate that, get back with council. I hate to say it, but the final item on my report, or my request now, because I'd sure like to see us make a record here on the meeting. Uh, scrap metal sale, I'd like to have permission from council to clean up around not just the city hall, but other areas of city property. Uh, we've got some old air conditioner units out here on the side of the building. The tower beside the building, where the police department used to have its radio antenna. A lot of metal we could pick up and scrap, and possibly potentially get a few dollars for it.
Motion to, uh, to approve a scrap metal sale.
On what?
A motion second, motion second, discussion. Ben and I'll have everybody show hands. Thank you. Financing board, Lisa?
I'm happy, I, I've included the financial report for the month of February 2018. Uh, in the general fund, we collected, uh, for the month of January, collected in February, $96,566. That, this month, and that's compared to $88,800 for 2017. We did receive a check, I don't think I even told you there, we received a check from George Power Franchise, $268,000.
$268?
Was $10,000 less than last year. I'm not sure why. But anyway, at this point, we're, we're within budget, uh, in all departments. Splash, we have a cash balance right now of $614,900. Uh, we've left the $75,000 splash money for the month of January and February. And, and water fund, we are within budget at this time, I have, I have no other options.
Questions, council? Roads report, Lonnie? And any other?
Okay, mayor and council, you have a list in front of you of the roads that's going to be on the first bid package. Uh, it is ready to get leases to appropriate and, uh, to send it to the progress for advertisement. There's a few less streets than normal, and the reason of that is the width for these streets, they range from 14 feet wide to seven feet wide. We will also have to contact the striping company, they are covered up with center line and edge striping contracts. So we have, will have to, uh, get with someone that does parking spaces. And I have got two recommendations, one in Cleveland and one in Blairsville. And I'm trying to make contact with those people to see if, if they are able, if they have time, the ability to come in and do all of our parking spaces on Main Street and these other streets that need it.
Main Street, I've met a lot, you lost me, you're talking about after we paved it?
After it's researched.
Okay, we, we need to start talking about thermoplasty.
Right.
That's the correct term?
Yes, it is.
And that, it makes, that'll look better, and I think that's what most people won't see in town, even if we had that on our streets today, it looks a lot better.
It's a little more expensive, but it lasts a whole lot, it relaxes better.
Someone quoted in the meeting today, four.
Yes.
Four times the cost, lasts four times as long.
Looks four times better. Okay, uh, anything else, Mike?
Uh, we met with one of the members of the DOT, Mr. Walder was not at this meeting. Uh, usually he's the one that we contact with. The gentleman that was there, he was supposed to get in touch with the mayor, he gave him a timeline on the mast hose for the red lights, and.
Supposed to be this fall, but he didn't give me a definite.
And a time element on when they're exactly going to start on the turn signal in Houghley Street.
And the big project, 2019, starting to buy right away.
Yes, they're supposed to start.
Don't laugh there, 25 years later. Police report, Greg?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Start the day off with morning.
City's got a police report for the month of February, responded to 918 calls from 911, responded to 41 motor vehicle accidents. issued a total of 125 patients for the following, 87 speeding, six seatbelt, one shoplifting, one reckless driving, one, three uninsured motors, 20 miscellaneous violations, and two possession of marijuana, less than out. Your state toll, issued a total of 41 for grand toll in City Court, 161. Had 25 statements taken for the following, two possession of match and felony, felony possessions, related object felony, possession of a dangerous weapon felony, two possession of controlled substance felony, one theft by shoplifting felony, five theft by shoplifting misdemeanors, two forgery in first degree, two forgery in third degree, two exploitation of elder felony, uh, two theft by sex felony, one entering auto felony, one aggravated assault felony, terrorist threat and act felony, one misdemeanor protection of police officer, and one warrant for financial transaction court fraud. Miscellaneous caused upon two with 36 long calls, 27 disorderly, 13 harassment, uh, five professional, 73 suspicious activity, 22 domestics, and 23 two marriages.
Questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Rock?
Mayor, help me. Over the month of February, the city fired four hundred and one hundred and seven emergencies, those were one structure fire inside the city, two outside, no vehicle fires in, no vehicle fires outside. One garage fire inside the city, three outside, six motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside and outside. Forty-four emergency medical responses in, forty-two out, six other calls in, two outside. For the first two months of the year, it's 268 emergencies, fire inspection, like two sets of plans for renovation or construction, and conducted 12 inspections.
Questions, council? Thank you, chief.
Mr. Looney asked me to give you a quick update, the results of my highest soot transit class. My admin staff, my admin staff and myself went to GIFT a couple weeks ago for an update of the transit class. I'll hit the highlights where it's been up to now.
I wonder why you hesitate, why?
Mostly.
Just to make sure he wasn't a thug.
Yeah, definitely. Most of the new changes that have come off since we were inspecting in 2007, help us, some of them help us tremendously. Uh, the old problems that we had in 2007 will still be a problem this time, but there's nothing we can do about it. Uh, we were getting to 2007 for size of water line, I had a second fire station, drive time to certain areas, I mean, personnel, but obviously we can't fix any of these things.
Well, we could add the county fire, they built a 515.
Right, things like that will help, the things, things we didn't have in 2007, things like that, those are, those are some of the changes. They allow me to claim that now versus 2007 when I could not. So, all, all the changes helped, some of them helped a lot, all the old problems will still be there, but we are working on it.
Questions, council? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
John up there, Jake White, sir.
First false trucking getting going, but every time they get a chance to get on the field, so we're just hoping it's going to dry out, so we can get out there.
of rain, so we're just hoping it's gonna dry out, so we can get out there and start. They're working hard, but right now it's, can't keep the water off the field, we're gonna get some rain. Get no other business, we're gonna hand them up. Come on in.